Mr. Mayor, Honorable Council Members, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you have given this community, blessing us with fine farmland, rangeland, and a place to build a community for our families. We ask you, send your spirit to serve your servants who enforce the rules, serve the sick, keep the store, teach the young, who labor at their craft and minister with your word. Solomon called himself the servant king and asked not for wealth, long life, or the demise of his enemies. He asked instead for an understanding mind to govern your people, a mind that could discern between good and evil. We ask you, grant the same wisdom to those who make decisions for this community. Help all citizens of Los Banos to work for a common good through useful invention, salutary regulation, helpful occupation, wholesome recreation, good manufacturing, and meaningful education. We ask you, preserve this community from recession and depression, epidemic and contagion, misrule and disharmony, drought and flood, fire and Holocaust. Give them the grace to obey and trust your word through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call, please? Actually, yeah. Call the meeting order at 6:00. Start by doing that.
Padonia, Jones, Lewis, Yannis.
Here, we have a quorum. Move on to item four, consideration of the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Councilmember Lambert?
Sagin.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Move on to item five, presentations. All right. So this certificate of recognition is presented to Justin Carruthers, Maintenance Worker II, Public Works, City of Los Banos, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the City of Los Banos for being named Employee of the Month, May 2024. Sorry you couldn't be with us, Justin. All right. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest. It's within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chambers information table on the back. And this time, I'd like to invite the public to come forward and speak. And just a reminder to silence or turn off your phones, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Blanche George, and I'm an individual that volunteers in lots of different groups. But I'm before you today to thank you so much. Thank you, Chief. And thank you, Ivan Mendez. I don't know if he's here. The code enforcement officers and the animal control individuals. I truly appreciate the Mayor and the Council for approving and working forward to what you committed to, which was certain projects. We have been actually working in conjunction, Friends of the Los Banos Animals, as well as Feral Freedom, the Animal Shelter, Ivan, and the city, microchipping hundreds of animals. You have given us the opportunity to be able to utilize parking lots and also personnel to set up barriers. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I just want to watch my back. You guys watch my back. But thank you so much for doing that. We have been, like I said, microchipping. We've been spaying, neutering. The Chief and Ivan and code enforcement officers and the shelter individuals have all worked together with the guidance of our city manager, you, and the Council. Without this push, there was nothing before, and we appreciate, we do appreciate. The animals have been getting spayed and neutered. Dog licensing is up. Your shelter individuals have been working diligently and hard with the leadership that they've been given and the permission and the money and the forethought. Truly, as we progress, lost animals will be eliminated to nearly low. We all know that. Dog licensing will be up, we all know, the population of the different animals. You've also been assisting with the individuals that are homeless and their animals, making sure that you have accountable for each of those animals. Providing a firm hand to local citizens, especially dangerous dogs that are out there with feral cats. We appreciate you. We appreciate you, appreciate you. We really appreciate the both of you. Thank you so much. We're going to continue. Next week, we have, again, another forty-four dogs we're taking. We are assisting and working together with local veterinarians. So there is that push and that togetherness, working together in one accord with your guidance and your leadership. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. My name is John Keats, City of Los Banos, but also proud planning commissioner for nearly ten years and a proud member of this great city. I am here to deliver some city improvements that have occurred over the last year that unfortunately haven't been broadcast in our local agencies, whatever you want to call those. So excuse my back, but I think I should address the community. I can't do that, Bill? Okay. Can I turn this way? All right. So let's start off with Public Works and Infrastructure. Several key roads were resurfaced, which hadn't been done in roughly twenty years. And that was due to minimal maintenance, if any. Based on everything I know, these roads were ranked fifty out of a hundred, and that's based on the California Pavement Condition Index, PCI. On that scale, a range of forty to fifty-four is considered poor. So that was done. They also, also twenty-plus years of neglect and minimal maintenance of our waste treatment plant are finally being addressed. And my understanding is that our city manager, Josh Benaro, was the first city manager in years to actually physically gone out to the water treatment plant to see the conditions that were out there. Departments and divisions, some new divisions. Our city had no facilities division. Under Josh's vision and guidance, the city had a true dedicated facilities division. Also, he increased the fleet mechanic department from one person to multiple and continues to address the shortfall of city vehicles. Josh, along with staff, created the first-ever housing division to address our growing homeless population. The division staff, which I have personally met and I know are very dedicated, have, over the last year, made over fifteen-hundred contacts, were able to assist with the recreation of fifty-four ID cards, assisted forty-three in recovering lost birth certificates, and successfully housed eleven of those homeless people. No easy feat, but under Josh's leadership, it was done. Police Department. During the funding cycle, the police, the new police department, Josh was approached and asked to potentially reduce the footprint of the new construction by a thousand square feet or so, I believe was based on budgetary reasons. But because Josh's vision and the care about our officers having more room than less, he basically asked staff to work out the budget to keep that square footage, which it was done. Part of that, I believe, was associated with the new gym facility that was actually requested. And that gym facility is state-of-the-art for our officers, our first responders. Also established the city's first police drone program to assist the police force with law enforcement, and four officers are now trained to operate the drone, and I believe many more are on the slate to do that. Now, in the last, in terms of divisions, the animal shelter, I believe, which is in Miss Lucy's district, is now open on weekends. Staff was increased, Wi-Fi was installed there for the first time, and now a dedicated veterinarian partnership exists. That has never happened in this town. The Fire Department. Ladder truck was added, the Fire Department Fleet, and that was something that had been talked about for over ten years. They also constructed a burn room for training purposes, and three additional positions were added. In Parks and Rec, Colorado Park, located again in Miss Lucy's district, neglected and maintenance deferred for over twenty years, are finally seeing the improvements that were horribly needed. The ag complex has been neglected for years, and now under Josh, we're finally seeing some improvement projects being initiated. Not to mention the number of city parks, which have seen a complete makeover under the leadership of Josh and execution of Joe Heim and his team, with more to come. Thank you, Joe. Four hundred trees have been planted, and trees which were not trimmed or proactively maintained for years, if not at all, have been mitigated, mitigated, and in that mitigated a potential public safety hazard.
That's time.
Okay. And I got one more.
Thank you.
Economic Development Department.
Got to cut you off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Adam Connor. I am one of the co-owners of Anabasis, a local affordable housing development company, the company that responded to the encampment resolution fund, RFP, for the city. I just wanted to come introduce myself, so you can put a face to my name. We are working on another very similar project right now in Merced, our Home Key Project, which is fifty-eight modular units. We've got a great proposed team assembled for this project, Lawler Escavations, which has done a ton of work here in undergrounds in the city. We've got a great project manager that's developed several developments with PATH and Mercy Housing. Just a solid team. I'm going to be sending an email out to everyone with my contact information and just kind of touching base. And if you have any questions, if you want to have any discussions, if I can provide any information, feel free to reach out. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll think I'm beating a dead horse, and perhaps I am.
Can you pull the microphone down? Sorry. Thank you.
My name's Peggy Edwards, and once again, first off, kudos to the Chief for having his officers do their job and tow the vehicles during May Day that were parked illegally. I applaud him for that. What I want to know, though, and he's the man that can answer the question, what's the difference between those signs and the signs that are throughout town saying, "No parking, 3:00 to 6:00 a.m.," so the sweeper can do their due diligence and prevent pollution from going down our storm drains? How come that is not ever enacted on? Especially on Ice Street, where there's a city parking lot right across the street? And lastly, I'd like to address the city manager. Kudos to him. I understand he was behind that box that was being painted. That will definitely be a tourist attraction. I'd like to see all of the boxes painted. If you haven't seen it, that's at the corner of Six and K, and it is a beautiful job, very good artist. Thank you.
Thank you.
The information's going to be hopefully passed out to you is what's going on in the City of Los Banos, and it's wrong and illegal. It'd be nice to have the citizens of Los Banos actually care and take it seriously, because it does lead to suicide. It's not funny. I'm just hoping people would be understanding about it, but it's a real thing that's going on. It's crazy that attacks people and harasses, tortures people with this stuff. It's going on in a lot of countries and in cities and other states, so I would love to see if people would take it more seriously and hopefully maybe get a billboard to push it up. Cyberbullying, electronic harassment is a serious thing. It's getting worse, what's going on in the City of Los Banos, and it'd be nice to see somebody actually take it seriously and do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members and staff, my name's Taylor Wolfson, and I just wanted to stand and say thank you for your continued support of downtown. And I think after the previous few years, we've seen a couple of new restaurants come into town, we've seen some new businesses come into town, we've seen some of the beautification projects that we've been working on come to fruition. And while we were all frustrated to see the drugstore decide to move on, I was over here earlier today talking with a potential new tenant that I have gotten further down the road with than I have with anybody else before, so I'm very excited about that, and hopefully we'll have another new business very soon.
Good evening, city council members, Mr. Mayor, city director. Maybe you can work your magic on my problems, Josh? That would be awesome. I'm here to speak on two issues. The first is about the homeless on the rail trail between Mercy Springs and Place Road. I've been talking about this same problem for over a year now. My first meeting regarding this was 5/17/2023. The population is increasing. I'm noticing more and more tents encampments. By the way, I do live on Pitzer Road that backs up to the homeless trail. My more fears are mostly realized at this point with the summer warmth, the homeless are out and about all hours of the night. They're building, they're yelling, they're playing music, whatever they feel like. I do believe they sleep during the day, and they're up all night. If this was a neighbor, I could call the police and file a noise complaint, and the police could cite them, but what is it, what good would that do to this population? You can't cite them, as they have no assets nor do they care. I do have assets, and that makes me and my neighbors vulnerable. If I confront them or do anything, I could be sued. If I yell out my window to be quiet at 1:00 in the morning, it could backfire and make me a target for more harassing. So I lay in bed, trying desperately to sleep, because I have to be up in three hours, and sometimes I cry, sometimes I'm so angry I rant and rave at the window, and eventually I do fall asleep from exhaustion and try still do to my job at work the next day when my brain is in a fog. I am begging this council and city manager to find somewhere to move them, make this portion of the rail trail uninviting for the homeless. You are the city leaders, and you have a responsibility to the citizens of this town that pay taxes and contribute to its success, to help when you've been asked at every single city council meeting for it. While I am very thankful for the hard work that Christie has done with the homeless and the grants, it will still be at least a year and a half before the tiny homes are built. I am tired that I have worked most of my life to have my quality of life so reduced. I know my neighbors feel the same. Secondly, the second issue is in regards to the park in Deans Way at Shaughnessy Village. I find it amusing that Mr. Hotstetler has decided to start showing up when that development has been finished for three years. I've been asking about it since 2022. I sit and listen to him make statements, and he has paid the city a lot of money, and he's tried to meet with them to get this resolved. I think that's a half-truth. The building department signed off on his permit, I'm sure in good faith, before both of those items were complete. So he had a get-out-of-contract-free card. Never mind that the people he sold those homes to paid for a park and for access to 165 on Deans Way. Three years later, they still have neither that and nor do they have access. When the city started stepping in to complete the park with taxpayer money, not the developer who made his money, in my opinion, he seeks his golden opportunity to use this as leverage for other things he wants the city to do. He fences off the park and stands up here and cries for public support when the homeowner should be picketing his other developments until they get what they paid for. He could have just gifted the city the parcel and wrote it off on his taxes if he was as caring as he said. As a matter of public record, in the Planning Commission meeting October 24, 2018, the conditions of approval for the development are there for anyone's reading. I've printed some of the pages out to show the developer was responsible for working with Caltrans for the intersection of Mercy Springs and Deans Way as a condition of the subdivision, and also for sidewalk mitigation due to the hazardous condition of walking along the highway in the dirt. This was a contractual part of the development, and he did not complete it. Do you see any other development in town where this has happened? I, for one, will not be a part of Mr. Hotstetler's campaign for public support for making us the taxpayers pay for his obligations. I encourage the city council to hold Mr. Hotstetler to his obligations. And I would like the city to start the budget workshops. Again, it would be really helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, fellow residents, good evening. Couple items. Recently, it was revealed that Caltrans is proposing a roundabout on Highway 152 at Volta Road. This question was asked of one of our council members, and they said, "Well, that's a county project. I have no information on it." Well, it is, in fact, a Caltrans project, a state project, and I'd like to know if, Mr. Mayor, or collectively, if we could find out when the project's going to be started, the expected completion date, and any detours, because as you know, or should know, a great majority of our population commutes in that direction. They're already experiencing traffic, round-trip traffic of over three, sometimes five hours, depending on road conditions, and this is going to severely affect them. So it is something that's very pertinent and directly affects our residents. So I don't know if you can look into that, Mr. Mayor, please. The utility tax increase, in looking at Proposition 218, unless I'm mistaken, it states that the tax increase can only be enough to cover the expenditures providing that service. In other words, there can be no overages. The implied rationale is that the city cannot use that tax increase to overcharge and then use that money for other expenditures. So at this point, I don't see anywhere where the city has showed us that they are indeed in a deficit in that category. So if that could be presented before next month or next week's, excuse me, next council meeting, that would be appreciated. The homeless situation. You know, for over a year and a half, we were told, "We can't do anything about the homeless situation. Hands off. Sorry. Let's go to Plan B, et cetera." Yet, without any notification or public hearing or any participation by the members of the public, a new compound was erected. Again, how much did that cost? Where did we get that money from? What's the end goal? What's the long-term, short-term goals of this? Nothing was presented. But again, it was done without any public participation when people, like you saw this evening, have been asking for relief. So if that can be done there, why can't it be replicated in other areas? So that can reduce the conflict with some of our other residents, especially our residents who are trying to get sleep so they can go to work, so they can pay taxes, so we can fund these projects? Now, the big question is the recall. As you know, two council members are, their petitions are going, and one has been completed for the recall of two council members, council members in District Two and council member in District Three. Why the recall? Well, the main reason that people are upset is because $1.8 million was given to a close, personal, lifelong friend. Again, this was done against legal counsel's advice, and the insurance company refused to pay it because there was no case. Other issues as to why folks are eager to sign the recall is that the city manager has been giving $200,000 of taxpayer money to use as he so chooses, up from the $5,000. Three, the city council, majority of the city council, voted to have, require a unanimous five vote to have any oversight. five vote to have any oversight over the city manager. Again, as referenced in the Westside Express, no other city manager in the state of California has these types of protections. In light of that, this council also voted to remove any kind of civil service protection for our employees. And who is behind this recall? Well, the several thousands of members of the public who signed the recall are behind the recall, whether it be developers, stay-at-home retired personnel like myself, or other members of the public who want accountability, want transparency. For example, tonight, we're going to vote, or you're going to vote, on the budget with no oversight and no transparency. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, staff and public. My name is Greg Hotstetler. I'm proud to be here. I want to talk about the recall tonight. It will put Brett Jones and Doug Begonia on the ballot, possibly. I cannot recall any of you. This is up to the voters, it's in their hands and have the civil right to do so, according to state law. Maybe you should not be worried about the recall itself, you should be worried more about the performance. Based on what I understand, your performance appears to be questionable. As I've said before, the city has collected tens of millions of dollars and seen little performance about building parks, proper road connections, and maintenance of landscaping. In addition, what appears to be a hostile work environment at City Hall, harassment of employees, allegedly Josh Panero was terminated as city manager because of that same situation, and then you, not Mrs. Lewis, hired him back with a total package for one year of over $2 million. With no experience as a city manager, no government experience whatsoever, and no personnel training. But I understand, talking to city employees and other employees, have worked for Chipotle and worked for Tesla, his performance was very questionable at a minimum. In addition to that, many city employees have left because of the treatment they received here at the city. And that's mostly what this recall is about. They were put on at-will employment, such as city employees, police, firemen and others, they have families to take care of. But yet Josh Panero, the $2 million city manager, has had to have five votes of the city council to replace him as a city manager. That's made history all over the state, unheard of. Nobody does that. The treatment of businesses here and how you delay them getting their permits to expand their businesses and their properties, any harassment of businesses, trivial things that we won't talk about tonight. It's a tragedy that we have to look at some of the parks in this community, such as what some call Foxtail Park on Pacheco, full of foxtails, and to the point you can't take small dogs over there because they get foxtails in their eyes. And when you first went to work, Josh, you said you'd take care of it. It's gotten worse, it's horrible. And it's been used as a homeless camp, and the main park you drive through town is when people from out of the area look at our town and it looks trashy. Certainly, all the money you have collected, things could be different in this community with the millions of dollars you have collected. In addition to that, you have not maintained the landscaping that was put in that cost tens of millions of dollars across the community since 1985. And you will find dead trees, dead shrubs, and lack of maintenance, but yet you continue to charge the residents on their tax bill every year for the so-called lighting and landscape district. What do they get for that? Not much at all, the way I see it. It appears to me that money had been moving into other accounts in the city. How much money has been transferred from the lighting and landscape district into the general fund? Apparently so you can pay Josh Allen his, Josh Panero, haha, Josh Allen's 40 million, $2 million to our city manager, Josh Panero. People are going to revolt on the lighting and landscape district soon. It appears to me a rip-off of the community. What have you guys done for the community since you've been elected? It appears to me very little, being self-serving and you run what I call a cronyism, the four of you, not Deborah Lewis. Deborah Lewis asked the finance manager whether or not she could talk to her about finance issues, and the finance manager on live TV here said she was prohibited to talk to Ms. Lewis by order of Josh Panero. That sounds crooked, sneaky, and stinky. What's up with that? That looks like a dictator talking. Our company got the word that we cannot talk to some of the staff without your permission, Josh, dictator? There may be more to that in depositions, crooked, stinky, and sneaky. And my cues, you need to say a few things to my face, arms length.
Just address the council, please.
Mayor and council, I want to address you tonight on a few issues. Number one, I've been in the city for 52 years. I've watched councils come, I've watched councils go. I've watched, I've watched mayors get down off of the podium and give back $100 bills because somebody gave them $100 to vote away and they decided afterwards they weren't going to vote on it. Things have changed. We're now into a, we, when I came here, I planned to stay a year or two. I've stayed here now for 54 years. I plan to stay, I like Los Angeles. I support all of you on the council, not, not four, not all five, and the mayor, I support you, you've done a, you've done a great job. This town has changed, we've had a, we've had a lot of input that we now are taking care of our streets, which we haven't in years, we've got, we've got trees trimmed, we've got a lot of things going on. But now we have a recall, we have this great recall. I've been accosted at my house nine times by people that tell me they're from out of town, they get paid, they just want a signature. It means nothing that I'm signing to get rid of Brett Jones, because he's not, that's not for him, but he got, one of them told me, he got $6,000 a month to pay for his truck. One of them told me he gets $1.8 million, he got $1.8 million, and I'm really ashamed because he's not sharing any of it. It's a shame that we have hired people going around harassing people to sign things. That is, that is unheard of. And then I read in the paper today, the Westside Express, there's never been two people recalled on a council before. People forget that happened in Los Angeles, they tried to recall a mayor and a council member. They didn't, they decided they didn't have enough signatures at the end and they withdrew it. But that was done by local people, not by anybody else. I've watched Los Angeles for years, I've watched, out of, my office used to be across the street from here, used to sit in my office, used to watch the council have closed session meetings, and then somebody come out after the closed session meeting and get in a vehicle with the developer and leave. It's amazing how things, how things change and how memories lapse. So I'm truly ashamed that you live in a city that somebody's paying thousands of dollars to recall people for absolutely no reason. I believe all of you, including Josh, have done a great job. I think you, the things are a lot better here than they were before. You just got to learn to get along a little bit, and we'll, we may have a great place to live again. I don't plan to leave, I don't plan to move somewhere else and then come back and tell you how to run your city, I'm staying here. I have no intention on leaving Los Angeles. So keep up the work that you're doing, thank you.
Thank you.
That went into my time, I'm sure, that's all right.
You're good.
My name is Raul Granillo, I'm the pastor at Mercy Springs Church on Mercy Springs in Santa Barbara. I wanted to first let you guys know that we are opening the church, started June 1st all the way until August 31st. We will open it as a cooling center for anybody in Españos who just wants to come and get out of the heat. We do work in cooperation with our department and our amazing chief, who's just, and we love having you, chief, great. Both our chiefs are pretty cool. I lost track of thought. Anyway, yeah, sorry, so we are opened up every day of the week, Monday through Friday, we'll be open starting at 2:00 until 8:00 in the evening, and Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 until 8:00 as well. For anybody who just wants to come, get out of the heat, watch some TV, whatever, there'll be water, snacks, stuff like that. So just invite you to come to the church to be a part of that. I want also, as a member of the community, just kind of address the council, mayor, and all the staff. I don't envy your task, any of you. I think I've said this before, it doesn't matter what you do up there, you're going to be criticized. And some of it is due, and some of it is good. It's good to be held to account, it's good to be able to sit there, it's important that we have this time where you have to sit straight-faced and just take it. And some of it may not be deserved, some of it may be overblown, but it's an important part of this. And I know that as that comes, it's easy for you to, for anybody, so I won't just pick on you, it would be easy for anybody to get to a place where, to get through this, I've got to just shut out. And I want to encourage you to not do that. I want to encourage you to recognize that every single person that comes up to this podium regardless of what it is that they say, whether it's to encourage you or to condemn you, every one of them is a real person and a member of this community who really is wrestling with something. I can't imagine not being able to sleep and just the absolute frustration of that, I get that. I can't imagine being frustrated by feeling like maybe your city's forgotten you, or your people don't care about you because, and you know, I want to say to kind of defend Josh, I guess, I don't care who you are, you can't fix everything at once, and some things are not going to get fixed. But I want to encourage you to not forget that these are people who come up here real faces and empathize with them and respond to them afterwards. I know you can't now, but, but even those who are attacking you, just, you know, don't, don't try to defend yourselves so much as try to defend the people whom you represent. And hear what they're saying and understand what they're saying. And look at each other and recognize the same thing, that every one of you is a human being, every one of you is a member of this community, and every one of these staffs are members. And I see us dehumanizing each other so much in different ways that it just bothers me. My last name is Granillo. I used to joke that the perk of that last name is I knew when it was a telemarketer because they'd ask for Mr. Grinillo, which is just annoying. But I've also been places and had people who would intentionally demean me by refusing to get my name right, by refusing to say it in the proper manner, by calling me Ray Lou or, so I'm not going to call you Raoul because I can't say it, I'm not going to call you Granillo, so I'm going to call you Grinillo, or intended to say, yeah, I know, and not fixing it. We have members of our staff here who's, I get it, are maybe different, maybe, I don't know, maybe we don't know what's going on, but you work with each other, you should know with each other. Mrs. Portillo's last name is Portillo for the record, so that everybody knows. And when you get somebody's name wrong, it shows how little you actually pay attention to that person as a human being and more as just an object. So remember each other, every one of you, and always kind of bear in mind, you guys are all people at the end of the day, every one of you, I want to say, has a good desire, even if maybe you find yourself in some bad situations. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Carol Etchberry. I've spoken once before, last year, regarding all the fun that's going on here in the city. And the gentleman that just spoke, I enjoyed that thoroughly, Taylor, I'm glad he's looking into getting our downtown, that corner is a dire part of our town. But to hear the past people speak and to put all of your thoughts into what you read in a newspaper as the word is not true. Whenever I've had a question, I've called Mr. Lambert, I've called Josh, I've called Doug, I've called Brett, I haven't bothered Bill, I didn't bother you, Paul, but I always get an answer of what's going on. And with this recall that's going on, when, like they had said before, when you have these guys coming in rude, obnoxious, using cuss words, the main reason that they want the recall, not for Josh and Doug, but not for, sorry, not for Doug and Brett, but they want Josh's ass out, quote, unquote. I had five come to my door, I let them talk, I wanted to hear what they had to say, obnoxious. Went to Save Mart, a guy in the front, obnoxious, yelling, why aren't you signing it, you know nothing, lies, then two days later go back, another guy, where are you from? Doesn't matter, don't live here, would never want to live here. Why are you doing this? Because I get paid big bucks to do this. Well, that's great, that's what, that's what you have coming in to try to strip our council of the votes that people voted you for. We chose you to improve our city. I see so many improvements. People don't want to see it, you don't see it, but I see a lot of improvements. The city park, I don't see homeless there, I'm there, I go by there all the time, that's cleaned up. People think the city is the only place to deal with homeless. Our state is a mess, our state sets a lot of these laws, we have to follow them. We try to do what we can, I feel so bad for the woman that has it behind her house, I would go crazy. I have a neighbor that's not worth living next to, but it's frustrating. So when you, when you guys make your decisions, we put you there for these decisions. We respect you, you shouldn't be tools or abused, any of you. I'm just tired of hearing it, and I don't want to see any more people coming to my door bashing our town that don't live here. And I don't know what kind of control we can get from that. The city officers have no, they have no overriding it, they can just ask them to not be so rude. But I think our town is a town to fight for, it's a wonderful town to raise children in, it was. I'm proud that Josh decided to come back, he didn't have to come back, he was booted out, not by Doug, he was booted out by the past that didn't want him here. And they approved things and then kicked him out. And if they, if you realize the whole story behind it, it's not, you know, he's doing this, he's doing that, no, he's here fighting for the city, he actually lives in the city. No other city managers lived in the city. They come, they drive back home, they just build their retirement fund and off they go. So I agree with this gentleman, don't take it personal, continue to do all the things that we voted for you to do. Josh, hang tight, keep doing what you're doing. I hear good things from other people that say, I was talking, I was someone I didn't even know, I saw in Carmel, and they built the Chipotle here, and they were saying what a wonderful young man we have for a city manager. And I said, really? He said, I've never seen anyone, and I have a lot of franchises, I've never seen anyone deal with me with respect and positive of what our city can be. So basically, that's what I wanted to say, and I couldn't stand sitting there anymore, I just had to come put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, I'm Ann McCauley, 27-year resident. This town has changed a lot since the time we came here. I think when we came here, the population was probably around 21,000. We didn't live here full-time until 2008, but we built a house here and moved in in 97, and it has changed a lot. We still have a lot of improvements. But you know what I want to say? What do we want in this November election? Anarchy? Just throw the hell out of everybody? Just upset the whole council and throw in who you want? And then what I'm hearing about how this recall is being conducted, this is despicable. And anybody that signed that recall petition should be ashamed of yourselves. And the way you can rectify that is to vote these people in because they are doing a job that is not easy, but they're not, they're not sinister. And for people that come up here and think that they're, that basically are saying you're sinister, it's disgusting. Total removal for someone that's not, all these words are not totally honest. Greg Hotstetler, he does, he says he doesn't need the money to be here, but he sure didn't have any problem buying up an awful lot of property on Pioneer Road and Henry Miller just so that he can scrape up the last starving dime of anybody who needs to build something out there, whether it's another highway, another lane or whatever. So when he says he doesn't need the money... So when he says he doesn't need the money, that's, there's a lot to be, there's a lot of doubt behind that. Individuals have told me that they have contacted him, he stands up here and says that different people on this council have not contacted him. I find that to be a full bold-faced lie, he just doesn't want you to know. And why don't we see Anderson Homes up here carrying on like he does? Obviously, they're not litigious, they're doing their work, they're honoring their contracts, and we don't have issues with them. And I'm glad that we've got them here as another builder, because we need someone else on this stage as well. It's well that the previous finance director left, whether she was fired or forced out, whatever, doesn't matter. That person never invested in, made good investments so that we could have some extra money and build up our potential to have more contracts. I believe when Josh was brought in, he wasn't just brought in and then just left to sit back on an easy chair, I'm sure he had a mandate, you will get these things done, you will improve our city. And if I'm not mistaken, we have at least 10 more million dollars in projects that we wouldn't have had if we had these lousy investments that gave us no money. You cannot proceed with any contract in a city if you don't have decent investments that pay, that pay you any revenue. I'm sure, everybody jams, screams and carries on about him stealing 1.8 million dollars. I'm sure if the truth were known, the lawsuit probably was for a lot more. And I think we've gotten a hell of a lot more than 1.8 million dollars' worth of value since he's been here. There've been people that have talked about all the improvements. You've got plenty of people that don't want to say anything about any improvements because they want you to believe nothing has been done. And that is, really, that's despicable. How low can people go? we've gotten more for our investment with Josh. The fact that he has gotten, and so many people have talked about the things that he has done, which have been rewarding for this town. I think that the recalling is a cheap shot. This turns, this speaks volumes in the wrong direction. Some just refuse to see the positives. We have elections for orderly changes in our seats, if that's what's necessary, but to upset the whole friggin' council, there's something wrong with that picture. This whole thing, it reminds me of the schoolyard bully. He's going to keep going until he gets what he wants. And right now, he wants to upset everything on the council. All you need, you folks, all you need, all you recall folks, just want it your way.
15 seconds.
Thank you.
Good evening, Julie Creighton, citizen of Los Banos all my life. First of all, I want to say, the people in the galley that claim they know the circumstances that city manager Panero was terminated under are false. Those proceedings were private, they were personnel matters and they were done in closed sessions. So if any of you out there think that you have the details of that, you need to speak up because there's a leak in City Hall about personnel matters, and that is very serious. If you think about it, Mr. Panero could actually file another claim because personnel matters that regard him are being leaked out. So before you come up here and claim that you know exactly what was going on, you better think again. Second of all, Mr. Greg Hostetler, I've lived in Los Banos all my life, he was welcomed in with open arms, I think in the 80s, allowed to build unfettered, and I'm sure some of you back there now that are talking about him have fallen all over yourselves to shake his hand or have a conversation with him if you've seen him at an event, or a local restaurant, or a local bar, but now he's the bad guy. Think about it, he's just the one that started the recall first, or, you know, I'm assuming, that's what everybody's assuming. It may have happened eventually, citizens, it takes a little bit longer, we don't have the money that he has, but it eventually, it would have happened. So think about that. You were friends with him, you accepted money from political PACs from him, and now he's the bad guy. California Form 410s on the city website point specifically to PACs that he funded during some of his elections. So you need to get your problems with Hostetler solved and leave the rest of the city of Los Banos out of it immediately.
Actually, you gonna give something out? Gonna switch gears right now. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council and esteemed citizens of Los Banos, my name is Maria Phillips, and I stand before you today representing the American Hero Initiative, a newly established nonprofit organization dedicated to serving our nation's veterans with disabilities. Our mission is simple yet profound, to empower veterans by removing barriers to safe and independent living through financial assistance for home and auto repairs. At the American Hero Initiative, we recognize the sacrifices made by our veterans and the challenges they face upon returning home. For many disabilities incurred during their service can make everyday tasks seem insurmountable. A home in disrepair not only poses safety hazards, but also takes a toll on one's mental and emotional well-being. Similarly, the need for car repairs can disrupt essential appointments and employment opportunities, further exacerbating the difficulties faced by our disabled veterans. This is where our program comes in. We understand the hardships that unexpected expenses can bring, and we are committed to providing support to those who have bravely served our country. Through our initiatives, we offer assistance for both home and auto repairs, ensuring that our veterans can live in face, safe, and comfortable environments while maintaining their mobility and independence. But our mission extends beyond mere repairs. We aspire to create a community that values and supports our veterans, recognizing their dignity and enhancing their quality of life. By alleviating financial burdens and fostering inclusivity, we strive to build a society where every individual, regardless of ability, can thrive and contribute meaningfully. Our work is driven by a deep sense of gratitude and respect for those who have sacrificed so much for our nation. It is our duty as citizens of a community to honor their service by ensuring that they have the resources and support they need to lead fulfilling lives. As we gather here today, I urge you to join us in our mission. To make this vision a reality, we need everyone's help to get started. We have monthly donor applications for those who wish to contribute regularly. We are also seeking corporate sponsors and small businesses alike who can partner with us to amplify our impact. Additionally, we will be applying for grants and other funding opportunities to ensure our initiatives are well-supported. Your involvement, whether through donations, sponsorships, or advocacy, is crucial to our success. Together, we could create a brighter, more inclusive future for our veterans. Let us build a city where the principles of dignity, inclusivity, and service are upheld, not just in words, but in deeds. My husband and I have lived here for over 10 years, and this is based out of Los Banos, and our first focus is going to be the Central Valley, obviously within Merced County to begin with. We are approved and a nonprofit that we hope to extend over the next five years to the entire state of California. But we must start small first to get off our feet. So you can find our nonprofit's mission statement, donor information, applications for assistance, and more at the American Hero Initiative. What I did give them for all of you guys out there at the council is one of our pamphlets that explains who we are, what we do, and how to get involved. So I thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope you check this out.
Anyone else? No? All right. Seeing none, oh, do we have one more?
Mark Fay, Los Banos, citizen for almost 37 years. So just a couple of things I want to speak my mind about, about the Josh Panero thing, the city council firing him a year or so ago, and the, or maybe the galloping, she kind of touched on is, it was never made public what Josh Panero was terminated, never made public to us, we never knew why. It did start coming out recently that he was terminated because he was not liked by the city employees, but hey, who knows? Nobody would, the city council wouldn't discuss that supposedly because it was needed to be behind closed doors. Want to, I can feel for the lady that has constant unhoused people issues. We had an unhoused issue on East B at 165 about three years ago, where unhoused development started growing there near, I think it's a water uplift station or something, started growing there, tents and barricades, and a couple of days it grew more and more. I contacted Public Works because I thought that was who I needed to contact because I didn't like seeing what I saw in my neighborhood. I didn't say I live in the racket club development, so that's in that neighborhood. And so I contacted Public Works like three times, it never got, never got any movement on it. I contacted, tried to contact the city manager, couldn't get through, and I contacted the police department a couple of times, thinking maybe they could do something. not shortly, because it went on for about two weeks, this encampment. After a toilet, a full toilet tank and seat showed up there, it got the ire of my wife, and her being the wiser of the two of us contacted our city council member about the situation. And about, I think it was about 10 hours later, she got a call back from the, for the council member and said, hey, this is what we're looking at, give us a little time, it was a Friday, and it's a weekend, city staff isn't really flush on the weekends, so give us some time. On Tuesday, it was gone. And that was because of that phone call, trust me. I want to talk about, I hope I have enough time here, I want to talk about, since I've been here in Los Banos, some of the major accomplishments that I've seen come to Los Banos. And I'm calling up pre-Panero. We've got a community center, I think we got five shopping centers, we got a lot of fast food growth, and a lot of gas stations, we got a lot of houses built, a whole lot of houses. We got growth through our police department and to our police officers. We got two fire stations and a full-time fire department instead of it being a volunteer. We got a rail trail, and we got an HG faucet slash Pioneer Road Trail, and we got a dog park. We got a lot more stoplights, and we got a lot more stop signs, and we got a lot more schools, and we got a lot more crummy roads. Now, Mr. Hostetler said, what accomplishments have been made since this council has been in place? I went down to, I went down to City Hall first looking for this book, and then I went to the community center. And if you open it to page 16, the first thing in there is Shaughnessy Park, Shaughnessy Village Park that the city is planning on building. Oh, boy. And then you turn the page and you see the accomplishments that are done. Large tree project, solar project coming, exterior painting, all sorts of stuff. I mean, there's literally, folks, there's seven or eight pages of all the things going on in the city.
Time, thank you.
Get involved. I just want to end with this.
Got to cut you off, sorry.
Eighty years ago...
Got to cut you off. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll close the public forum, move on to item six. I'm sorry, move on to item seven, consideration of the approval of the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 245305 through 245597, in the amount of $2,861,565.33. Measure H Oversight Committee Financial Update. Measure P Oversight Committee Report. City Council Resolution Number 6772, delegating authority to the city manager after consultation with legal counsel to negotiate and purchase all right-of-way realit property interests, including fee title easements and leases necessary for the Otegalita Road, Pioneer Road intersection improvement project, including executing certificates of acceptance and complying with all legal obligations associated with the purchases within the authority provided by the city council. City Council Resolution Number 6773, approving, authorizing, and ratifying the city's participation in the Homeland Security Grant Program and authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city of Los Banos to enter into the standard grant assurance agreement with Cal OES and a subrecipient agreement with the county of Merced for fiscal year 2021. City Council Resolution Number 6774, approving, authorizing, and ratifying the city's participation in the Homeland Security Grant Program and authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city of Los Banos to enter into the standard grant assurance agreement with Cal OES and a subrecipient agreement with the county of Merced for fiscal year 2022. City Council Resolution Number 6775, approving, authorizing, and ratifying the city's participation in the Homeland Security Grant Program and authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city of Los Banos to enter into the standard grant assurance agreement with Cal OES and a subrecipient agreement with the county of Merced for fiscal year 2023. City Council Resolution Number 6776, awarding contract for publication of legal notices, legal advertisements for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute agreement with the West Side Express. City Council Resolution Number 6777, calling and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, for the election of certain officers. Mayor-at-large for a full term of two years. Councilmember for District 1 for a full term of four years. Councilmember for District 4 for a full term of four years. And city treasurer-at-large for an unexpired term of two years as required by the provisions of the laws of the state of California. City Council Resolution Number 6778, requesting that the Board of Supervisors of the county of Merced consolidate a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, with the California statewide presidential general election to be held on the date pursuant to Section 10403 of the Election Code. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right, thank you. Any items on the consent agenda that wish to be discussed by any member of council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to pull item A, C, as in Charles, and D as in David.
Okay, A, C, and D. Okay, A, C, and D. Thank you. Any, anyone else? No? Okay, so let's start with, uh, with item A. Whoop, sorry.
Thank you. There are a couple of checks on the, um, check report that I'd like to, um, question and, and ask what they were for. The first one is check number two four five three one three to the Garlic and Onion Advisory Board for three hundred dollars. I'm assuming that since the Garlic Festival is coming this year, that maybe this is some sort of fee that the city has to pay for that. I'm not sure.
I believe that's related to a deposit return. They, um, the group, uh, regularly meets at the community center and rents a room and, uh, we hold up a deposit and then we reissue that after the following, the, the rental. It's not related to the Garlic Festival though, it's a advisory group.
Okay.
They may be involved, but it's not related.
All right, thank you very much. And then, um, check number four, I'm sorry, two four five three two seven, U.S. Bank Corp. Payment for forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty, twenty-three cents.
Yes, good evening. That is the payment for our P card program. So it is paid, we have a P card program with U.S. Bank and it gets, it gets paid, um, every month.
What is the P card?
It's the purchasing card program for the city. Um, it is a state, um, issued, uh, program that allows the city, um, staff to have purchasing cards so they can, they can, it can facilitate the purchases of, uh, services within the municipal code purchasing ordinance.
All right, thank you. And on the second page is check number two four five three nine zero, Employment Development Department for four thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine. It's about halfway down the page. Employment Development Department?
Unemployment. Our unemployed, oh, thank you. E D D payment, unemployment.
All right, okay, thank you. And a little bit further down, check number two four five four zero one, Quad cough, I think that's how it's pronounced, sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-one cents.
I believe those are engineering, yeah, engineering services for the city.
Thank you. And then on the next page, um, it's about two, uh, three quarters down, check number two four five four six five, Tyler Technology for five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six.
That is related to our financial system, our monthly, um, payments for the maintenance of our financial system, Tyler soft, the, the software.
Okay. And, um, three checks down from that, check number two four five four six eight to Raymond John Van, and I won't pronounce the last name, for two thousand, uh, forty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
I, those are, yeah, those are supplies that we order, um, and um, those are supplies. It is part of, we've purchased furnitures, uh, furniture items from this vendor.
Okay. And I have about, uh, three more. On the next page, about midway down, check number two four five five one six to Correo Incorporated, uh, twenty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
Yeah. This is, this is part of our Public Works wastewater master plan. Uh, there, there are consultants that we paid for that service.
The storm, they're doing the storm drain master plan.
Storm drain.
Okay. And then check number two four five five three zero to Thress Kettle Corporation, uh, fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
This is, this is related to new water meters for the city.
Okay. And the last one is check number two four five five, two four five 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 four to Fun Express LLC for six thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-three cents.
This is Oriental Trading, is what Fun Express is their LLC. Um, and I'd have to look at the check to be sure what it was related to in terms of what program, but it would be program-related, so, um, things like movie night, um, uh, it may be leftover from, from the egg hunt. Typically will get billed like a month plus later after that, so it could have been related to that. So I'd have to look at the exact, um, uh, bill in order to, to, um, see that it may also be multiple, um, in, invoices built into that.
So, to our financial director, is that in your laptop as to what that payment was for?
It's, um, in my laptop. It says, it's applies for our recreation programs.
Okay, that is just a general statement.
Right. And, and our recreation, um, department, we would have more information on what the details of those purchases were.
Okay, so when they submit a request for payment, they're not required to submit backup for that to you?
There's an itemized receipt. I just don't, I can't recall off the top of my head of what this specific one would be. I can certainly get that information, but as far as what gets listed in the system, it's listed as applies.
And backup is always required in order to make a payment to, of any sort, for any vendors.
Okay, I, I, I guess I was just assuming that, um, you know, that backup information would be in your computer.
Oh, my computer gives me the, um, information that we enter in the system. I don't have the physical backup. I would have to go back in our files and pull it.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, Mayor, I'd like to move on to item C. As a pre, um, sort of like a pre-information to item C, on item B for the Measure H, there was a financial informa- a financial report included in with the discussion with that committee, but I noticed on, um, Measure P for the Oversight Committee, it's just a statement of things that were discussed, but there was no financial report included in. Is there a reason why that information's not submitted with the report?
Measure P has a requirement that the Oversight Committee submits the certification that they've received the report and that the, um, and this certification, the committee members, um, are certifying to the council that the expenditures presented in, in the, um, in the committee are in accordance with the, with the Measure P, uh, what the measure is supposed to pay for. So, um, that is what we are submitting. Measure H does not have that requirement that we have this formal letter to submit to the council. So, we, we provided the report. However, the report for Measure P, the financial report for Measure P is available in our website under the Measure P Committee Meeting, um, Agenda Item. It was, it was part, it's what, what it was presented to the, um, members.
And, and I thank you for that information. It, it would just seem to be a little bit easier since, I mean, it is on the website that, since this was presented to council and to our public, to just consolidate it altogether so that people don't have to go to multiple places to try to find information. So that's just my suggestion is that in the future, when these quarterly reports are given, to include the financial portion with it so that, um, council or either the public doesn't have to go someplace else and try to find that information. Thank you. And then item D, um,
Real, real quick, Councilmember Jones, do you have something on?
Yeah. Yeah, regarding the check register, um, it seems like it might be a good policy for council to submit your questions ahead of time. Uh, of course, in a specific because there was over a dozen items and I can't imagine staff to know every little detail in advance, but I'm sure if they were emailed in advance or maybe an email went to the mayor or city manager, I'm sure you guys would be more than happy to get those questions for us so we're prepared at the meetings.
Take that into consideration. Thank you.
Well, that's a nice suggestion, uh, Mayor, but, uh, has, has been historical in the City of Los Banos that any council member could go to staff, especially our financial director. I have always been able to go to our financial director, sit down and ask questions about what a particular check was about, what it was, you know, why we paid it, and then I don't have to discuss it here. But since I'm, I don't have that ability to do that anymore, then this is the form in which I have to use to ask those questions.
So I'll, I'll actually address that when, uh, we're all elected and we go to the California League of Cities Training on becoming an elected official. Um, and I can actually pull up this, this report and share it with anyone. We're actually directed not to communicate directly with staff because staff doesn't work for us. We have two employees as council members. We have the city attorney, we have the city manager. And so the direction from the California League of Cities of four hundred and fifty-eight cities in the state of California is that we have one conduit of information. So I think the best practice, and again, I can't historically speak for however we've done things in the past, um, but majority of, of cities operate in the manner of if you have a question, go through your city manager. City manager then directs his staff to, to get the information. So I think that's something that, again, by reinvent the wheel, we can, we can move forward that way.
Okay, well, um, that may be, uh, how your interpretation is, but, um,
I can share with you that the training.
It's, it's okay. I mean, I'm not going to staff directing them to do something different. I'm just going to get information. And so since I can't get it, I will find other ways to do that. So, um, if I may, I'd like to proceed to item D. I, I, I think I'm just trying to determine whether or not this particular project is connected to, uh, and, and I'm directing this, I guess, to our Public Works Director. Is connected to the widening of Pioneer, Pioneer Road. Is this part of the widening?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, and I know that's kind of been on the books for some time, uh, to start that project. I'm not sure what caused it to drop off and nothing's been done in regards to the widening. But when I, when I look at, um, excuse me, the resolution, when it talks about, um, the federal and state funding connected to it, it kind of gives me an idea that we're running up against a deadline of possibly losing that money. So how, how long has that money been sitting there for us to use to widen, to do this widening? Or, um, this easement and the widening of Ortega Lita and Pioneer at that corner?
Excuse me, if I may interrupt, this is not about the Pioneer widening. This is about the intersection at Ortega Lita and Pioneer Road specifically for the, uh, right-of-way around that signalization of that intersection. So I think the city engineer may have misinterpreted your original question.
How long has this been on the books for, um, the right-of-way for the signalization on Pioneer and Ortega Lita?
Ma'am, councilmember, I've, I've been here a short time. My, my gathering and meetings and discussions is probably at least four years or longer.
At least four years?
At least, at least four years or longer.
Okay. All right. So that, that fund, the funding for this widening, has, has it been there for about four years now?
I believe so. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Do you want to vote back on the full agenda or do you want to do them individually?
No, we can just.
Do the full agenda?
Yes, yes.
All right. All right, do we have a, uh, motion regarding the consent agenda? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and discussed.
Thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And by the way, happy birthday, Vanessa, before we go any further, so. Yep. Yep. So we'll move on to, uh, before we cut cake, uh, move on to item eight. And before we do this, the consideration of the renewal of the Los Banos Downtown Property Business Improvement District, um, our city attorney and councilmember Lambert are going to recuse themselves.
Yes, Mayor, I have a piece of property within the boundaries of the P bid, so it's not appropriate for me to sit up here while you're discussing this.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So also, uh, my business that I operate is in the downtown association.
Understandable, thank you. And for this, uh, give it, give it a minute. We'll go to Community and Economic Development Director, Susan Elms.
Okay. So the item before you tonight is, uh, consideration for renewal of the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. Uh, it's hard to believe. It's basically been five years and we're up for renewal again. So, just a bit of overview on this particular item. The Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District is a benefit assessment district whose main goal is to provide improvements and activities which constitute and convey a special benefit to assessed parcels. Of the, this approach has been used successfully in other cities throughout the country to provide special benefits to property owners, uh, namely increased sales, attraction of new tenants, increased occupancies, and specifically increased property values. When you look at successful downtowns, most of them are because they have a Property and Business Improvement District. Um, and that creates a sustainable funding source and a unified voice for that district, for specifically the downtown, to be able to advocate for special benefits. Uh, back in two thousand and nineteen, a coalition of property owners and the Los Banos Downtown Association uh, decided to pursue establishment of the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District in order to create a revenue source dedicated to providing special benefits to assessed property owners. Uh, the P bid, so instead of the huge acronym, I'm just gonna say the P bid, was established. Uh, so it was, it went through the Prop two eighteen process in, um, October of two thousand and nineteen uh, with a hearing and a protest ballot. And then it was established, um, in January first, two thousand and twenty for the initial five years, uh, which is set to expire December thirty-first of this year. Uh, the Los Banos Downtown Association and property owners now wish to renew the P bid for an additional ten-year term beginning January first, uh, two thousand and twenty-five to December thirty-first of two thousand and thirty-four. This is the location, uh, this is the boundaries of the district. Uh, the boundaries are not proposing to change. Uh, they are bound by K Street, uh, Seventh Street up to the alley on the north side of I Street and Fifth Street, which this constitutes the core business district of our downtown. Uh, the purpose is to provide activities improvements as a special benefit to assessed parcels. It's to provide maintenance and general security, marketing and placemaking, and administrative and operations to provide services to the assessed parcels within those boundaries. Uh, the budget, um, the annual assessment for that first initial renewal uh, is anticipated to be a hundred and seventy-six thousand, forty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. The annual budget may be subject to an increase, uh, in assessment rates of no more than three percent each year. And that's all within the Management District Plan, which is, um, an exhibit within the staff report, uh, which outlines, uh, what those, the max increase and, uh, that process. That process for an increase is not automatic. It has to be approved, uh, by the board, which consists of primarily property owners of the district. The assessment is based on parcel square footage and for this renewal, it's proposed to be set at thirty-one cents a square foot. I just want to highlight some accomplishments, um, that I just want to highlight some accomplishments that the downtown association, because of the P-Bid, has been able to implement within the downtown. They were able to purchase camera surveillance system, which has a proactive monitoring of downtown, and this is between the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. The property owners receive a weekly report each Monday. I get to see this report, and it is, that camera surveillance system does a great job in deterring transients from camping in downtown. It deters loitering, deters really any unwanted activity during those times when there really isn't much eyes down on the street in the downtown area, so it's been very helpful. It has also been used to buy new Christmas decorations and lighting, new seasonal pole banners to welcome shopping, entertainment and dining in our downtown. It's maintained our downtown landscape and planters. They've been able to plant new trees on the north side of I Street. They partnered with the city on the tree trimming. They purchased 30 new trash receptacles. They pressure washed sidewalks. They do this twice a month, in which the downtown association does maintain a log. I think it's done at 2:00 a.m. in the morning. They also have a litter removal service, which includes garbage, debris, and leaves, and this just helps enhance the solid waste removal. They have upgraded and maintained the downtown music PA system. This is the nice tranquil music that we hear in our downtown as we shop. They've also provided activities and community events. We have a certified farmer's market now every other Thursday in our downtown at the Henry Miller Plaza. Thank you, Maribel, for all your hard work on putting that together. We have a Fourth of July celebration. This started in, I believe, 2019, and some of the older members can, Taylor, Tarek, Tom, you guys can, I think it was 2019, but it might have been 2018, when that first celebration was done, which is a great success for downtown. They hold the farm-to-table event. They have an annual reception for the board. They have a casino night, St. Patrick's Day Pub Crawl, which was new this year, the wine stroll that the downtown association was able to bring back to the downtown, a holiday celebration done in December previously, that was the lighting ceremony. It's going to be more of, I think, a holiday celebration, and then the merchants also participate in this on Thursday nights in December. And then there will be a gala membership appreciation. This is going to be in partnership with the chamber, and they will be having a mariachi concert in October. And, oh, I also, I'm not sure why that one got missed, but removal of gum on the sidewalks, that's been a large initiative, especially on I Street in front of the bars. I also want to note that in addition to these accomplishments, they also have projects slated for the future, which would be purchase of more surveillance cameras. Tonight, it was noted about one of the traffic boxes being painted by a local muralist. The downtown association will be taking that program forward and will be working to have public art, specifically murals, in the downtown. They will increase planting for the landscaping and continue to increase maintenance on the landscaping. They are going to be providing wayfinding signage, and then just increasing more activities and events in the downtown. There's always something going on in downtown, and it's very refreshing to see a very active and vibrant downtown. Budget, so the initial year assessment will be $176,047.76. As you can see, there's, in the previous establishment of the district, it was separated into four pots, is what we used to call that, and it was all equally divided, so 25%. As you can see now, what the coalition of property owners and board members really looked at this and said, hey, we want to allocate the majority of the budget to maintenance and general security and marketing and placemaking. So you can see that that makes up, and it's actually equally divided, which is 42.5%. And then 15% is for operations, and that is to make sure that these services are administered. So the petitions, petitions are signed by property owners representing greater than 50% of the district assessment budget and must be received by the city prior to initiating a ballot procedure to officially establish the P-Bid. Petitions were distributed to property owners of record on March 2024, along with the management district plan, and this would, to sign a petition, it would only be in support. Should the council provide authorization to move forward with the petition process, then the next step would be the protest hearing with ballots. Petitions in support of the district formation have been submitted by 21 property owners representing 34.17% of the total assessment. So the city petition is key to continuing on the renewal of this process. The city owns property and has received a petition. The request tonight is for the city council to consider authorizing the city manager to sign the petition and to complete and sign the assessment ballot. The city's assessment share is $29,295, which, our next item is the budget. This item has already been proposed in that future budget. This represents 16.64% of the total assessment, and with the city's support, the legal requirement to receive submission of petitions in support of more than 50% will be met. The duration of this particular renewal, so the first establishment of the district was for five years. The renewal, the proposal is for 10-year term, beginning January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2034. Near the end of the term, the petition, ballot, and city council hearing process must be repeated all over again. So it's not an automatic renewal. As you can see, we're having to go through this process again, and should this process pass the petition component, then it will go out to ballot for a yes or no vote to all of the property owners. So management of the district, it is governed by the Los Banas Downtown Property Owners Association, which is the downtown association, which is a 501(c)(3), and they serve as the owners' association for the P-Bid. District formation process, so within the staff report, it does outline the dates. So today is the resolution of intention. Upon submission of written petition of more than 50% of the assessment to be levied, the city council may initiate proceedings to form a district by adopting a resolution expressing its intention to form a district. That's what we're going to be asking to do tonight. Then on June 23rd, we will need to notice a Proposition 218 ballot, which requires the city to mail written notice and assessment ballots to the owners of all properties proposed to be assessed. The mailing of the notices and assessment ballots begins a mandatory 45-day period in which owners may cast their ballots. Then the final public hearing is set for August 7th, 2024, where the council will open a public hearing and receive public testimony, close the public hearing, and council will then direct tabulation of the ballots and determine whether there is a majority protest against the assessment, and if there is no majority protest, the council may adopt a resolution declaring the results of the majority protest proceedings and renew the P-Bid. So fiscal impact, as I said, Prop 218 states that no parcel is exempt from assessments if they receive benefit from the improvements and activities. So what, I've already stated that the proposed annual assessment for the city is $29,295, which has already been proposed in this upcoming fiscal year budget. Prior to establishment of the P-Bid, just to give insight of, should the P-Bid not continue, the resources that are now going to the P-Bid from the city would be directed back to city departments to have to manage, and this, so prior to the P-Bid, the Community and Economic Development Department and the Public Works Department, but specifically just in my department alone, we were in charge of the seasonal light poles. So any of the holiday decorations, we were in charge of the seasonal decorations, like I said. So the seasonal banners on the light poles, we changed those out four times a year, which was a cost to the city, all the seasonal decorations, cost to the city. The downtown banner, which is maintained and operated by, now the P-Bid was maintained by the city. Public Works did power washing of sidewalks, graffiti abatement, furniture and fixtures, repairing, replacing, and that's just to name some of the few. I'm sure I'm missing a whole slew of things that the city was responsible for. Joe, am I missing, like, I know I'm missing a ton, but that's just the tip of the iceberg. Obviously, now that the P-Bid is in place, they absorb those costs in the maintenance and the security of the district, which relieves that burden from the city, which is much more than what our portion would be of $29,950. So staff is recommending that the city council would adopt Resolution Number 6779, authorizing the city manager to sign a petition and assessment ballot regarding the city properties within the P-Bid, and adopt Resolution Number 6780, declaring its intention to renew the P-Bid. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that. Questions from council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Yes, the question that I have is, well, I have a couple. On page 10 and 11, you have the initial year assessment budget, and the scenario that's written, the statement is the same, and from year '25 to '34, all of the dollar amounts are the same, but on the next page, they're different. Can you explain to me what these two represent?
Sure. So if you read that sentence, that first sentence on page 10, excuse me, it says, if the 3% is not enacted, then the next table is if the 3% is enacted. So that's the difference of the two tables. And that has to be voted by the P-Bid Board.
Okay. I did see the "not" there, thank you. Okay, and so I just want to go back because I was skeptical in the beginning to even vote for this P-Bid, as some of the older members know that are here tonight. And there were a lot of promises made to the city about what the P-Bid would do, that it would help bring the city to look like what the downtown did at Water, I'm sorry, at Turlock. And so, you know, I've visited the downtown there, and I saw a lot of elevation upgrades to the old buildings there, which seems to be really inviting and enhancing to bring the community to the downtown and to patronize the businesses. I've sometimes indicated that, you know, I came here from Morgan Hill, and Morgan Hill, when I moved here, was their downtown looked just like ours does now. But obviously, there's a big chasm difference in the income level in Morgan Hill than it is here. However, I passed through there yesterday, coming from San Jose, and it seems like every time I drive through, there's either been a building torn down and a new one erected, or that the old buildings that are there are getting major facelifts. So my question is, does the downtown association assist or try to help the owners of buildings upgrade their buildings, give them facelifts so that it has a more modern look, or enhance the antiquity of what it is, so that it's more attracting to get new businesses down here? I think that's what I see that's missing, at least on my part and my vision, is that we want people to come, but we have to, you know, I would hope that our building owners are willing to invest money to upgrade their buildings so that it can draw new businesses into Los Banos. We do have some fine businesses down on Sixth Street that our customers participate, and we have, there's one on I Street on the south side. I, you know, can see from the back of the building here with a gentleman who owns that has put a lot of money in rehabbing that place, and I really appreciate that. But I'm not seeing that as a whole. We have businesses that are turning over, buildings that are empty, but there's nothing to really elevate what our downtown looks like. And I think as more people are moving here from the Bay Area, there's an expectation for them to have something to go to downtown that's going to draw them in, and not something that's just got some paint on it and maybe an awning here or there. We've got to do more to encourage our property owners to elevate those buildings and to change the face and just be a nice drawing. Mr. Wilson, you have a wonderful building on that corner, and I think it could really be an excellent draw. I heard you say earlier that you had a potential person that wanted to move in your building, but I think there's more that we could do as a city and have our businesses do to just dress up their buildings more to make it more attractive. So I don't know, I'm asking this question. I'd like to know if the downtown association is a part of that, which was promised to us in the beginning, so I don't know, maybe our CEO, the CEO of the organization can answer that and...
Sure, but I have enough, I think, history with the organization, but Maribel, feel free if you'd like to jump in. So those commitments were made because we had a benefactor donated a million dollars, pledged a million dollars to the downtown, and the downtown association at that time had created a facade improvement program, which was a 50% match. It was 50% from the property owner and then 50% from that donation. Unfortunately, that donation didn't come through. 50,000 of it did and was implemented and distributed to the property owners within the downtown. Check was provided here in the council chambers, if you remember that. Very exciting, but then the program ended there, unfortunately, but I think that the downtown association with a partnership would definitely want to continue, and I don't want to speak for the association, but I know that they would want to continue that facade improvement program that a couple of properties were able to benefit from. But you did mention, you did highlight Blue Agave, I mean Eric Delatory and Stephanie, just the investment, the amount of investment that they've put into that building. You are going to be blown away. It is a total transformation, and what that investment into the downtown will do for I Street will be remarkable. It will be completely changing, and not even to mention Jams 209. Your socks are going to be blown off, and that's not just me exaggerating or trying to sell something to you. It is, and David Souza, please tell us the amount of investment, 3 million, 5 million at this point, 4 million, just into our downtown. As you can see within the budget of the management district plan, over 10 years, about 2 million will be collected. So just on assessment alone, it's not sustainable to have a facade improvement program. It really would take partnership either with, from a benefactor, you know, from a philanthropist that's interested in investing in the community, or some sort of partnership some other way, or should the council be able to provide that sort of funding to partner with the downtown association? But it would take those types of dollars to be able to make that change in the downtown. And I do want to note, the city manager and I, and our previous public works director toured the downtown of Morgan Hill with their economic development director and their assistant city manager, and one of the top priorities that they mentioned of their successful downtown is because of their downtown association, the strength of the downtown association because of the sustainability that was provided with their P-Bid, and their P-Bid had just been renewed. So it is important to be able to continue this program for the sustainability of our downtown and to be able to continue to enhance and encourage that investment within and encourage that investment within the community.
And I thank you for that statement. But what I'm looking at, because I hear the things that you say they are going to be responsible for, security and cleaning up, market and marketing and placemaking and signs. But I don't hear future forecasting for this 10-year period of time that they're asking the council to renew this as to what your plan is. And thank you for bringing Morgan Hill in because I know that that had been discussed when we were in the midst of this five-year program, that they had a P-Bid and how successful it's been. So I'd like to hear from the CEO to tell me what your plans are futuristically as to how we can get this sustainable to get our downtown to the point where it's going to be attractive and for people to come down there and want to shop.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's more appropriate we direct our questions to staff.
Well, it's a public hearing. This is the Downtown Association, so I can ask the question.
It's not, it's not a public hearing.
Councilmember Jones?
Is this a public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing.
No, it's not.
I'm on the council, so I'm directing my questions to someone who's a part of this organization that I'd like to hear from.
I think I answered that question, though, when we were on this slide about accomplishments. I also went through the proposed, so not just these accomplishments, but also what's proposed. I went through a list of items that was provided by the Downtown Association.
But I want to hear what they have planned.
The City Council does not have authority to force a member of the public to answer your questions. You can direct your questions to councilmembers and our staff.
We are here tonight to talk about the P-Bid. City of Los Manos is not the only member of the P-Bid.
Correct.
We have a good percentage of the vote. And as one who has to make a decision tonight, I think I have the right to have my question answered.
Well, I'm on the board and you can ask me.
I'm not asking you. I'm asking the director. I didn't ask for your opinion.
Well, he's a board member on the P-Bid, so I think he would be appropriate to answer your question.
Well, Stacy has given a report, and I would just like to hear from the director.
Again, it's not appropriate for a councilmember to call out a member of the public. Again, this is, this is government. We don't just, you know.
This is government, absolutely.
Correct. We don't force people to do anything.
And we have, as councilmembers, we have the right to ask the questions.
Okay, well, I'm not going to pursue that any further. If you want to ask a member of the board, you can ask...
So again, I have been denied to ask questions to filter out what's going on with this P-Bid program.
There is a reason why the council has a representative that's appointed to the board.
Go ahead and ask your question to Councilmember Jones.
No, I'm not going to ask the question of Councilman Jones. This lady runs the program on a daily basis. We're looking, as a city, of five councilmembers to give money to the P-Bid organization. I think taxpayers have the right to know how that money's going to be spent and futuristically, how we're moving forward. Stacy's given the report. And this, I assume this report is for our portion of the money that they're asking for. And the report included all the thresholds of the people who are a part of the Downtown Association. And I assume that a lot of these people here tonight are board members as well, but I can't seem to get my questions answered. And this is a stall tactic.
You can ask a board member who's sitting right to my left anything you want. And he's a member of the board.
I'm a board member. The rest...
Mr. Mayor, if I also may, all of that which is being asked is within the Management District Plan. It's within the text of the Management District Plan, which describes the activities that will take place during that period.
I think one thing that's good to notice, and again, I'm a business owner, so, you know, to tell somebody how the next 10 years looks versus the next 10 payrolls is not realistic, and that's just the truth. Small business owners, again, day-to-day operations, how we get customers. I personally feel like, you know, the facade of the buildings, that's put in the cart before the horse, right? Businesses have to generate revenue. They have to do sales. They have to create customers. They have to build relationships. When all those things happen and you have an ROI or you have money now that you can commit to special projects or you can work with your property owners to then improve it. And again, that's my take on it. I'll tell you, too, that being a police officer here starting in 2003, there's no way I would have taken my family downtown from 2003 to 2019. They would not have set foot, in fact, they didn't. And since the work that you folks have done over the past few years, I'm proud to take my family out and walk downtown and do some shopping. So I will thank you for that. The other comment I have is the 15% operational budget. That is, to me, that's fantastic that you're able to accomplish these things and focus more on marketing and building relationships. And I think just as a city, we need to remind ourselves that we're not the boss. We're a partner. We're joining this team to be part of the Downtown Association. We're not in charge of it. So we're an equal beneficiary partner of it. And that's kind of the overall goal. Turn it over to...
Well, since I still have the floor, I think any business owner who doesn't have a forecast, including a city, of short-term goals, midterm goals, and long-term goals. That's why we have a plan that sets out to year, I think, '34, and it gets updated occasionally about what we're going to do. Doesn't, it doesn't hold water with me. So regardless of the way the rest of the council and the city manager may feel up here, I think the taxpayers are owed to know how their money that we pay to the Downtown Association is going to be spent. And these are questions, I think, that any council would ask. And I'm being barred here from asking questions as a councilmember.
You're not being barred. You don't have control over the public.
That I think that I'm entitled to have. I'm still, I still have the floor.
I'm going to remind you you don't have control over the public. And so if this continues, I'll just shut it down.
I still have the floor, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So anyway, it is what it is tonight. I'm not going to get my answers, and I will relinquish, and we can move forward with this.
Councilmember Jones?
I'm curious to know what business Deborah has owned in the past that's given her all this experience of what businesses should and should not do. Yeah, that's what I thought. The P-Bid is there to try to encourage economic development within the downtown. You get more attention, more foot traffic. It's pretty basic. Stores start doing better. They start having revenue. They can start investing back into their employees, into their buildings, start cleaning things up. We're bolstering that with this P-Bid by trying to clean the things and take care of the things that they don't necessarily have physical control over, which is anything outside their front door. That's what the P-Bid is for, is to bolster their businesses in their one way or another. It's kind of a evolving plan just based on the market. When we had COVID, things changed. We had to adjust. We hold events, try to get attractions down there, street fairs, which partner with the chamber to... We have pub crawls. We have casino nights. We have all sorts of different things. And Farmer's Market, just to try to get people that didn't know where downtown was because they passed by it on Pacheco. A lot of these people, they never even knew we had a downtown. And so it's to try to get more and more business, more and more people downtown to shop at these businesses. Maybe even invest downtown by building that maybe up for sale, do something nice with it, do a facade program on it. Speaking of facade program, our favorite developer, Greg Hosteller, was the one that pledged a million dollars that he reneged on. Don't know what happened there. It kind of sounds like he wanted to tie it to development agreements, and that's just the game we're not going to play here. So that's what happened to that. So the downtown business owners, they are responsible for their own facade upgrades and just building upgrades in general. There's a lot of old buildings. A lot of these businesses don't have the capital to just spend several hundred thousand or $4 million to do it. So they may, down the road, once they're retired, sell off their business and do somebody else that would like to give it a shot. So it's work in progress. It will always be work in progress. Just like Turlock, it didn't happen overnight. It took close to 20 years for it to get like that for downtown. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and again, just lastly, who are we to sit up here committing $30,000 to something you people have put millions of dollars in and tell you you owe us answers? I don't think so. I don't think it works that way. So do I have a motion? This would be 8A. Councilmember Begonia?
8A. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to the consideration of the renewal of the Los Manos Downtown Property Business Improvement District, item number, oh, council, City Council Resolution Number 66779. Do I have to read all that? I submitted.
Do we have a second? All right. And can we get a roll call vote, please?
Lambert? Begonia? Jones? Lewis? Giannis?
All right, now we'll move on to 8B. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, elected approved City Council Resolution Number 6780, submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
All right, and a roll call vote, please.
Lambert? Begonia? Jones? Lewis? Giannis?
Yes. All right. All right, thank you for that. And before we go on to item nine, the public hearing, now we're going to get into budget, I'm going to ask that we do a 10-minute recess, use the bathroom, stretch your legs,
All right, we're going to get started here.
All right, we have everybody back here? All right. Yep, yep. All right, let's move on to item nine, the public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described here in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item nine A is a public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of the levy of the proposed annual assessment for the 2024-2025 fiscal year for lighting and landscaping, correction, landscaping and lighting district numbers one through seven and nine through nineteen. And before we open the public hearing, just because I want to be fair to absolutely everybody in the room, how this is going to work is you're going to come up, have your comment, have your question, go back to your seat. Staff or whoever will then answer that question. And I feel I'm going to do that way so that everybody has an equal amount of time and opportunity to ask or give a comment on whatever they want. So for this, we'll go to Public Works Director, City Engineer Bergson.
Yeah, I'm a mayor, members of council. I'd like to turn this over to, uh, Mr. Heim who's Parks and Recreation. He's more familiar with the, uh, lighting and landscape district. I, I do know some technical engineering items I can weigh in, but Mr. Heim is a little more versed in the history of it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. By taking the lead on this item, I would like to thank Public Works, specifically Martha Brazil, for their, um, help on this as well as our finance department. Um, and so tonight we are presenting the, uh, annual, um, uh, hearing for the assessments for the LLDs, our landscaping and lighting districts. Um, we have eighteen lighting and landscape districts in the city of Ospanos. Um, uh, as the name suggests, uh, it, it's related to, um, our lighting and landscaping as well as, um, right-of-way storm drain facilities. Um, it is related to water and sewage in the sense that it has water and sewage related to those items. Um, sidewalk, street signs, um, of course, those also are related to our parks, um, masonry walls and fences and traffic signals within those districts, within the boundaries of those districts. Um, each year we do this, um, assessment, uh, hearing, and it's, uh, the, the biggest item relating to it is the increases relating to it. Um, districts are, um, sixteen of our districts can go between zero percent and ten percent inc- assessment increases. Two districts are maxed out at five percent. Um, typically, uh, most districts do see increases, um, relating to services as well as water and power increases. Um, over the history of our districts, we have, um, really, um, grown the districts into a sustainable funding source to provide services to those areas. Um, specifically, uh, it calls out in the staff report that's in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, that fifteen districts were in a negative. Um, as of today, only two districts were in a negative. But even just a few years ago, there was, um, over seven districts in, in, um, in the negative balance. And so, um, really, um, trending the, the right way, both the districts that are currently in negative are trending to be out of, um, uh, out of a negative fund balance. Um, so it's, uh, really becoming a, um, sustainable funding source for us. Um, and again, um, I missed, uh, Public Works, City Engineer, uh, Bergson ends up signing, uh, engineers' reports relating to each district. Each district is its own, um, budget. Uh, obvi- obviously, it's, they're all LLDs, but they, um, each have their own, um, assessments and their own, um, related budgets, uh, and accounts for each, uh, fund balance. Um, and that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
All right. So this time I'll, uh, open the public hearing to receive public comments. All right, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to nine A one. Do we have a motion? Or, I'm sorry, yeah, question from council. Councilmember Lewis.
Uh, yes, I have several questions to ask. Um, on the, um, on page two sixteen, um, there are a number of projects, um. It looks like in, in fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, uh, in District Three, there is a garden V-loop sidewalk plan at a hundred and five thousand. Could, could you tell me what, what that is and where it will be?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so stepping back for a moment, um, we're on page two sixteen. Um, and if you go to the previous page, there's, it's a full five-year, um, capital projection. These are projections only, so these would be approved each fiscal year that that comes up. Um, but for the purposes of the, um, uh, engineers' assessment calculations, we project out a five-year capital plan. Um, this particular item, Gardens Five Looping Sidewalk, is to, um, create a full looping sidewalk around, uh, the large basin park off of Persimmon and Mulberry. That, that large, um, connects to the canal trail there. Um, the park itself is called Gardens Five Park. And, um, this, uh, proposed project would, um, create a sidewalk that would be, um, uh, around the full perimeter of that, uh, basin, the, the top of the basin in order to just create a, a full walking path for, for users of the park.
Okay. Well, maybe I need to go out there and look because I thought there was a sidewalk around it already.
Yeah, there is on the east side. So this would, um, uh, create the full loop around it, um, on the north, south, and west sides.
Okay. And then, um, on page two twenty-five, it, it appears to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, num- uh, number eleven and number nine, Meadowlands and Talbot Park, are running in the negative. Are those the only two districts, uh, that we have that are in negative?
Yes, those are the two districts that are, um, in negative. Um, Talbot Park District Nineteen is trending towards, um, uh, getting into a positive fund balance. As you can see, uh, just in twenty-two, twenty-three, it was at seventy-six thousand. Now it's at nine thousand. You do see a greater fund balance, uh, negative fund balance for District Eleven, but that is simply because expenditures have gone up. We have some capital items in that district. But overall, the expenditures, um, are beginning to, um, balance in terms of, of the difference between revenue and expenditures.
So the capital items in Meadowlands, would that be parks? That you're talking about?
Uh, I believe it's storm drain related.
Storm drain?
Yeah.
Okay. And then for, uh, for the two, uh, eleven and nineteen, um, the funds, since they're in a negative, the funds that will support this, I'm assuming some of it is through taxation of people in those areas. The rest of the money, where will that come from?
Um, so I believe that, uh, in an annual basis, it's, it is like covered from the general fund, correct? And then, uh, that is reconciled, uh, uh, over time as that district, um, uh, collects funding. So that's part of the reason why we, um, keep this, this, this rolling fund balance is so that we're able to track that difference between, um, what is being covered and what is a negative fund balance.
Okay.
Um, and that's only five percent. Oh, yeah, Meadowlands is particularly limited because it is, it is one of two districts that has a five percent max. Um, of course, water and, and PGE costs are, are going up at a higher rate than that. And that's one of the reasons why that district, um, had fallen behind. That particular district has a lot of amenities. Uh, I think it's something like seven parks, uh, decorative street lighting, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Um. Okay, um, in District Ten, which is the Ospanos Creek Shopping Center, um, number six says park maintenance, and it says thirteen thousand dollars. Um, could you educate me on why that's in their budget?
I'm sorry, I was just trying to find the page.
Sure, that's okay. And these are not numbered, so that's why I couldn't refer you to a page.
Um, would you mind, uh, what page are, are you looking at?
There's no page numbers on these at all.
Um, can you tell me the title?
District Ten.
District Ten.
Yes. Part B. It's, it's the estimate cost for... Yes. The engineer cost estimates.
Uh, could you, I, I can try to answer the question. Could you repeat the question?
Yes, um, well, this is, this is a shopping center, so, um, there are no parks in it. Uh, and of course, they're not being charged for fences. They have professional services, tree maintenance, park maintenance, and landscape maintenance. Uh, and some of the, the, um, charges I can understand, but the park maintenance of thirteen thousand dollars was the one that I didn't understand. And I don't know if they're required to pay in to park districts that are surrounding, uh, the shopping center for residentials that are nearby or why they, they're paying for park maintenance.
Yeah, no, I can answer that. Um, so there are multiple line items, of course, as you mentioned, um, tree maintenance, uh, street tree maintenance as well as, um, uh, landscape maintenance and park maintenance. So, um, this particular district is, the location is along one fifty-two, kind of by, um, Walmart there where the Taco Bell subway is. Um, this district has that landscape there and it wraps around on Badger Flat. So, um, we use our two twenty account, which is landscape maintenance for, um, monthly routine, uh, uh, landscape services by our contractor. That's going to be, um, an encumbered amount. That's a regular amount every month. Um, our parks maintenance, uh, two twenty-one is used, uh, generally as a landscape improvement, uh, line item. So it states parks maintenance, but it's really a landscape, uh, maintenance, um, uh, line item. So improvements, uh, relating to irrigation, uh, improvements relating to, um, landscape improvements in that particular district. Um, we've been kind of, uh, I guess you could say, chipping away at improving that. We started on the corner of Badger Flat and we're kind of working our way west. Um, and so some of those improvements will be added this year.
So basically, they're paying for two landscape maintenance, uh...
There's a median in there as well, and yeah, down by Walmart.
One under parks and one under landscape. Okay. Okay, and this, this is, uh, District Fifteen, another engineer's report for Magnolia Groves, which is a, a housing, um, a residential area. And they are being charged for landscape maintenance and park maintenance. Um, I do know there's a center divide there off of Birch, uh, that, uh, surrounds that area. It, it kind of divides the, the, um, residential district, but there's no park in that area. So are they paying in to parks because of another area?
Um, same answer as the District Ten. So that parks maintenance two twenty-one line item is a general landscape, uh, improvements and maintenance line item. Um, so in that particular location, District Fifteen, which I believe it's our smallest district, um, it's about that half block right there off, on Birch, off of Ortigalita. And, um, the funding in that, that two twenty-one, which I, I believe it was like five hundred or a thousand dollars, um, is for, um, irrigation and landscape.
It's six hundred.
Six hundred.
Yeah, for park maintenance, six hundred. And then it's, um, six thousand two hundred sixteen for landscape maintenance. Okay, thank you on that one. I don't, I don't know if the answer is going to be the same on this, but we, it's, um, District Number Sixteen. Uh, and this is, um, the Senior Villages, um, I believe off of H Street, which would be, I believe, the K-Hobanian Homes, which is a, um, a gated community. Do, do we charge them fees?
Yeah, so District Sixteen is Senior Villages, as you mentioned. Um, that's the, uh, property there off of Colorado Watt and H Street. Um, we maintain a, a large portion of the outside wall, uh, landscape. So on the Watt, uh, outside landscape, the Colorado on the, on the outside there on the wall side. But on the H Street side, um, for whatever reason, we only maintain the right-of-way strip. We don't maintain the wall side. Um, and so that's where those, um, fees are associated to. And again, two twenty-one parks maintenance would be the general, um, expenses related to that.
So they, they are surrounded, excuse me, by a masonry wall. But there is a charge in here, um, make sure I have this lined up correctly. They have a charge on item ten for fence maintenance of two hundred dollars. Is, is there a reason for that?
Uh, I'm not sure. Uh, street maintenance falls under our Public Works Department.
No, fence, fence maintenance.
Fence maintenance would be the same thing, wall, wall or fence, um, typically falls under that line item. Um, in this case, um, wall maintenance. I, I'm not sure what the, the expense is related to for that. Um, it may be for graffiti abatement, um, for paint supplies.
Okay. And, uh, let's see. Trying to find the front of this project. Well, um, when, when I was, uh, asking about Talbot Park, and I can't find that page right now. Um, the, uh, District Nineteen, which I think is, well, it says the Racket Club on one, and it says San Joaquin Valley Hay Growers. Is, is that supposed to be Talbot Park?
Yeah, so District Nineteen is a little funky. If you look on the map, I think there's a map included in the staff report here. Um, you'll see that District Nineteen has two, um, non- Um, you'll see that District nineteen has two, um, non-touching sep- separate pieces. Um, one is up there by the Hay Growers, kind of by, um, I guess you'd Home Depot area. And then one is in that Talbot Park neighborhood. Um, they're connected by a storm drain, and that's the reason why that district, um, has non-touching boundaries. Um, and, but, but all the fees are associated to that district, or the assessments.
This color rendition is really hard to see, and, uh, with the numbers printed over it, it, it's, um, it could be difficult to determine which district is which, so, um...
Apologies, um, you could, it's, sorry.
The Hay Growers is the building that's on the south side of Acheco across from...
Mm-hmm, you can see the Home Depot property as well here.
Okay, so, um... Okay, so I, I don't really see any landscaping or anything around that building. So, um, what, what are the charges? We have tree maintenance, we have park maintenance, and professional services. I'm not sure what that category is for, but, um, I, I don't see any vegetation around, around that building. So I, I was just kind of curious as to why we're charging them for that.
Yeah, assessments aren't associated directly to that property, they're associated with the district, and so in this case, the, the landscape would be Talbot Park.
Okay, so the, the Hay Growers is actually Talbot Park, the charges?
It's all, yeah, part of District nineteen.
Okay. Okay, I think those are my questions that I had on the project. Thank you for the answers. I appreciate it.
All right, anyone else? All right. Do I have a, a motion regarding nine, eh, nine A one? Councilmember Jones?
Mayor, I'd like to approve City Council Resolution number six, seven, eight, one, as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you. Now move on to item nine B, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of the appropriation limitation for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. For this, we'll go to our Finance Director, Portillo.
Thank you. The item before you is the appropriation limit for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The appropriation limit, it is a state law that, um, established the limits on taxes that any government agency may, um, assess on the, um, on, on its residents for any given year. Um, this is, uh, voter-approved back in November of nineteen seventy-nine. It is also known as the GAN limit. Um, it is a, um, requirement for state and local agencies to adopt this appropriation limit prior to the adoption of their, um, of their budget. And the calculation methodology for, um, for coming up with this appropriation limit, it's supplied by the Department of Finance. Every year, the Department of Finance issues a, um, directive to all government agencies in which they, um, they supply us with the two factors that are needed in order to calculate this appropriation limit for, um, government agencies. The first factor is a cost of living, um, factor, which, um, in this case, the California Department of Finance provides us with the per capita, uh, growth factor for the state of California. And the second item that is required in order to calculate the, uh, appropriation limit is the population growth. Um, and it is the greater of the, um, calculation growth for the either county or the city. So, um, I've, um, provided you with a, um, snip of the letter that is provided by the, um, California Department of Finance, um, giving us direction on how to proceed with calculating the appropriation limit. Using the factors, uh, provided by the, um, California Department of, of Finance, we have, um, we used the prior year, uh, limit. Um, in this case, the prior year limit in twenty-three, twenty-four, um, our calculation was at a hundred and twenty-one million dollars, which was the maximum tax that the city could charge, um, to its residents. Um, utilizing factor A, which is the, um, growth for the California per capita, it's at three point six-two percent. And the, um, the greater change in population, um, between the city of Los Manos and the county of Merced, um, in this case, based on the methodology, we take the greater, uh, change and, and it would be the county's population change at point seventy-two percent. Um, we use these two factors to come up with the growth factor, and, um, we apply this factor to the prior year's appropriation limit. And we come up with our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five appropriation limit of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, which is the maximum tax that the city of Los Manos could charge to its residents in government taxes. Um, at this moment, the, um, the city is looking at a, uh, proposed twenty-four, twenty-five appropriation of twenty-five million dollars, which is significantly lower than the limit that we are allowed to charge our, um, residents. So, um, using this, um, methodology, it is the, um, approved for the, um, the, um, the methodology that it is recommended that the city uses to calculate the growth factor. If the city decides to use any other, um, growth factor for inflation, not the population, but inflation, it requires a voter, uh, a, 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 a vote from the governing body. And the Department of California, um, the Department of Finance, um, has the right to audit and, uh, potentially contest any of the factors. So we recommend that we use the factors that were given by the Department of Finance in order to calculate this, um, appropriation limit. And the item that you have in front of you tonight is the, uh, to conduct a public hearing, um, accepting comments and questions from the public. And, um, the recommendation from staff is that we adopt a resolution approving the appropriation limit for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, using the California Department of Finance-recommended factors. Oh, um, yes, the appropriation limit for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five at a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars, one hundred eighty-six thousand eight hundred and seven.
All right, thank you. Questions from council? No? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna open the public forum, or I'm sorry, the public hearing. Open the public hearing to receive public comments, consideration of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five compliance. Nope, nope. Public comment, consideration of the appropriation limitation for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. All right. Anticipating none, seeing none. Uh, close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilmember Begonia?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution number six, seven, eight, two, as submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, move on to item C. Actually, I'm sorry, move to B one, City Council Resolution, uh, number six, seven, eight, two, setting the tax-related appropriation limit in compliance with Proposition four and Proposition one eleven for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. And for this, we'll go back to Finance Director, Portillo. Oh, that was, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, that, that is the...
That's right, that's B one.
Resolution, correct.
That's how you know it's hot in here, just saying. All right, so let's go on to C one. All right. Public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget. And for this, we'll go to Finance Director, Portillo.
Thank you. Um, this is the budget hearing for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um, just a quick overview of what the topics that we will go through tonight. I will provide a, an introduction of our budget, um, document, the definition. Um, I'll provide it, city, the city's fund structure. Uh, we will go over the fund's overview, um, particularly, um, looking into the general fund, measure H, and enterprise funds. And, um, our last step for this presentation will be to conduct the, the public hearing for, um, the adoption of, of the twenty-four, twenty-five, um, fiscal year budget. Our budget definition, it is an estimate of income and a proposal of expenditures for a set period of time. In this case, the city of Los Manos, we adopt an annual budget. So this is going to be the financial map, the structure that we will follow for the fiscal year that starts July one, twenty twenty-four, and it ends on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, as I said, it serves as the financial plan for the city. It reflects the priorities and the goals of the city, um, establishes funding levels for city services. Um, it could change throughout the year. Uh, normally, if we have any changes, we will come through the council and provide you with a, a staff report, a full detail of the, the reason why we are amending the budget, and it, it requires council approval, uh, um, per our ordinance. And, um, it's also governed by the federal, state, and local laws. Our budget process, it's very lengthy. I would like to share that it starts early January with, uh, looking at all of the, um, um, revenues and expenditures that we have received within the first six, six months of the year to kind of give us any, um, an, an estimation of what we're, where we're heading with, with the budget, and to provide, um, estimates and bring forward any amendments that we may need to do at that point with the mid-year, with the mid, mid-year budget process. At that point, we are able to set estimates and provide our departments with guidance on, um, on, on, on how we are performing in our, in our budget and what we need to do. Once we work with all of our city departments, we request their projections for projects, any special services that are needed, uh, to maintain or enhance city services. And, um, those projections are reviewed and compared to the city's available revenues. And, um, we're able to produce the budget book that you have in front of you today in order to conduct this public hearing. Um, within the city's fund structure, um, we, the city funds are divided into five categories. The, um, we follow governmental accounting, auditing, and financial reporting principles. Um, we have our general fund, which is our operating fund, and also includes measure H. Uh, we have our special revenue funds, which are restricted, um, revenues that come through normally in the form of grants or, um, or, or, or funding that is earmarked for specific projects or specific purposes. Uh, we have our capital projects funds, and we have our enterprise funds, which normally, um, which are our utility services. They're, um, the user, um, user fee-driven, um, you pay for what you use, and, um, and, and they're supposed to be self-sustaining funds as well. And we have our internal service funds, which are the, uh, cost recovery services for any services that city staff provides to other city departments. Each fund and program has been carefully looked into. Um, expenditures were programmed using, um, available revenues, av- available resources. And our revenue projections for this budget twenty-four, twenty-five, um, were estimated using a very conservative approach, um, for the, for, for the many reasons. We want to make sure that we weather any, um, any fluctuations in our market conditions. We want to make sure that we're responsible and that we present a, um, a budget that it is able to sustain the city services, um, for the long term, not just a couple months. And then we would have to come back to you and say, you know, we need an amendment, we need something, we need something changed. Our next, um, our next item is to go through the overview of, um, our different funds. We're going to start with the general fund, and we are projecting to have, um, revenues in the amount of twenty-five point four million dollars to come through, um, the city. And majority of this revenues, as you can see, they are coming from taxes. Property and sales taxes are combined in this chart that you see in front of you. Um, and that makes up over three, um, three-quarters of the revenues that we are, um, that we collect on an annual basis. And, uh, we are also projecting to have expenditures of twenty-five million dollars. Um, these expenditures are heavily in our general fund. Um, um, the, our personnel, uh, numbers are the ones that make up most of the expenditures in this, um, in the, in the general fund. And, um, and then we have our supplies and services, which pay for our utilities, our services, our contracts, our, um, our trainings and, um, in, 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 in those, and insurance for the city. A quick dive into our revenue sources. Um, as I showed you before, we are expecting to collect twenty-five point four million dollars of revenue. Majority of this is coming from property taxes at seven point three million, uh, property tax in lieu of V L F, the vehicle license fee, at four point five million, sales taxes of six point seven million, charges for services, um, which are anything from our zoning and planning fees, building plan check fees, recreation fees, uh, projected to be at one point nine million, and licenses and permits, which, um, are, are building permits, our business licenses, animal licenses, any encroachment permits, that we are expecting to collect one point four million dollars in revenue. Within our expenditures, um, in year twenty-four, twenty-five, we are expecting in the general fund to have expenses of twenty-five million dollars. And, um, I, I, we included this quick, um, chart in there so you can have, um, a, a quick reference that, um, between the, the expenditure line items for personnel, supplies and services, capital outlay, and our contingency. Um, s- some of the highlights to share in our personnel side is that the, the city right now, we are undergoing, um, labor negotiations with five of our labor groups, and these are still ongoing. Um, we are hoping that we bring a, um, a, we bring agreements to the council, um, within the next, uh, with, within the next meeting. And however, because, because these labor negotiations are still ongoing, our personnel, um, our personnel projections are, are flat. The only cost of living adjustment increase that you will see here is for, it's for the unrepresented unit, um, which we are, um, we are applying a two point seven five percent COLA increase. In the, um, in the supplies and services, it reflects, um, anything, all of the increases that are projected for utilities, insurance, gasoline expense, supplies, um, office supplies, and labor materials, um, office items that are budgeted in this, in this line items. For, um, you will see the line item for contingency. The contingency in the past for our general fund has been between the, i- in the fifty thousand dollars. You see this year that we are budgeting a five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar contingency, and this is to mitigate, uh, five hundred thousand dollars we're setting aside. And this is to mitigate, $500,000 we're setting aside in order to mitigate any impact for, from the labor negotiations. Once those agreements come through, we are able to, we're able to mitigate the impact to the general fund on salaries that, or benefits that will be negotiated with the labor groups. In our capital projects, we are budgeting 1.5 million dollars in capital projects. And I, and I wanted to highlight some of these projects that the city will be doing with, within the departments. In the admin department, we have $108,000 that are set aside for capital projects, and they are going to be paying for security system replacement. We have budgeted a vehicle that it is also partly subsidized with the, with a grant. It's an electric vehicle for administrative or administration purposes. And, and also we have the financial software system that it's still reflected in our administration budget. In our community development department, we are reflecting the gateway sign that, that came to budget in May. And it was approved to, by the council, that we would set aside part of this gateway funding in the fiscal year 2324 and also in 2425. So we're reflecting about $340,000 of those, of that already approved project in the community development department. Also, we are looking at updating the traffic box murals, the downtown master plan, and also Pacheco flagpoles. In our police capital budget, we are looking at the phase two of the range restroom project, the camera surveillance system, police vehicles, K-9, a police K-9, along with the food and equipment supplies for the K-9 officer. In code enforcement, we are, are budgeting the purchase of a van to transport animals to rescues. In the fire department, we, the $362,000 that we have in there, we are budgeting for a kitchen upgrade at Fire Station 1, equipment and the uplift for the new truck and an electric vehicle also. This electric vehicle is also partly subsidized with grant funding. And then the purchase of turnout, multi-band radio equipment for the fire apparatus. And lastly, also, excuse me, in the fire department, we are budgeting for cameras for Station 1 and 2. And lastly, in the engineering side, we are budgeting for rehabilitation of the Madison Avenue building and the installation of a safety gate, which has cost split between the general fund and the enterprise funds. So that's just a broad overview and quick, really, for the capital items that are budgeted at a total of 1.5 million dollars. Council, we are presenting to you a balanced budget. And outside, outside of being a balanced budget, which it's shown there, where our revenues equal our expenditures, and really, we would have zero dollars left. We have, and in the event that we would be presenting a surplus budget, we would have revenues over expenditures. And in the event that, that staff presents to you a deficit budget, it's when expenditures are over revenues. I wanted to give you a quick snapshot that our budget tonight, it's a budget that revenues are over expenditures. So we are in a surplus, meaning that we are going to, or we're expecting to put $387,000 into our savings account in the general fund reserves. And, and our estimated general fund balance at the end of, of the fiscal year at June 30, 2025, is, is estimated to be at 16.9 million. At the moment, our estimated fund balance for, at the beginning of the year, on July 1, 2024, is expected to be at 36.3 million. And we have a sign committed and measure H funds that have their own purpose to be utilized at 19.8 million, leaving our unassigned fund balance at 16.5. And we will be depositing another $300,000, almost $400,000, to bring us up to 16.9 million dollars. We have a council policy where our fund balance unassigned should be 30% of expenditures at the very least. In this case, 30% of our expenditures of 25.4 million, it would be 7.5 million, which means that we are well over the 30% requirement in our general fund balance. And that means that we're meeting the requirement for the policy. In our measure H, you have a summary of expenditures. Our police, our police budget is estimated to be 1.3 million dollars between personnel, being one of the largest items in this budget, supplies and services, and capital outlay. With, with that capital outlay in measure H, we are looking at doing an expansion of the camera intersection project and also purchasing a mobile trailer for an LPR reader. Our dispatch at $412,000, our code enforcement at $434,000. In this budget, our capital outlay is looking at purchasing or replacing a K-9 vehicle for, I'm sorry, and the animal, purchasing the animal, an animal shelter vehicle in code enforcement. And in fire, our budget at $623,000. We're looking at purchasing new reporting system, radio equipment, turnout replacements, and finalizing the SBCA project in the capital side of this budget. And recreation at a million dollars with $430,000 in capital. And that, and those, a quick overview of those projects are landscape improvements, the design of a pump track, murals, or a mural at the community center, playground at Presidential Park, Branchwood Park, and scoreboards for Noah Jones Ballpark. We presented this financial report to the Measure H Committee on May 15, 2024. And the Measure H Committee recommended to, to the council that the budget that we are presenting is in compliance with the measure and for the council to move forward with these expenditures. An overview of the enterprise budget, we have water, wastewater, airport, and solid waste. Our water is total expenditure budget, it's at $15.3 million. Wastewater at 18.1, the airport at 856,000, and our solid waste at 14.9 million. And in here, we have several capital projects from, from our water line item at 8.2. Most of those are between water meters. There are fences at the work tank. We are working at meetings. Many of the improvements noted in the Water Master Plan Improvement report, a utility truck, a half-ton truck, hydrant valve, churning truck, and the leak, and leak detector equipment. And our wastewater, the capital improvements that you will see in there are going to be for the rehab of the grassland storm pump and B Street storm pump, lift station overhaul at North Gate Meadowland, Orchard Terrace, and master plant improvements and vehicles. And for wastewater treatment is the assessments of levees at the wastewater treatment plant, the construction of a water line near the St. Francis subdivision to the wastewater treatment plant as well. Our airport fund has $490,000 of improvements. Those improvements are the roof repaired to the hangars of 5 and 6, purchase of Mid Valley Aviation Building, a replacement of the runway, and identifier lights or rail. And about $823,000 in capital improvements for solid waste, which encompass fence around F Street, automatic gate at Public Works Boneyard, reconstruction of F Street locker room, purchase of a half-ton utility truck, tractor, a Kubota UTV, and also the streets, a street sweeper. It brings me to item number four, to hold the public hearing for the fiscal year budget 2425. But before I move forward with the, with, withholding the public hearing and taking any, any comments, questions, I just wanted to extend my gratitude to all of the department heads, their administrative staff, and my finance team as well, which directly or indirectly, they have their hands on this budget. So you can review it and you can see it tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Our recommended action, sorry, is to hold a public hearing, go through any comments, questions. And the recommended action from staff is that we adopt the proposed budget for fiscal year 2425.
All right. Thank you. So let's, let's open the public hearing. And again, just to remind those, come forward, give whatever comment or question you have. And I'm going to make time and room for everyone to have that, that ability. So we're not going to get into a full dialogue, ask your question or comment, go back to your seat, and they'll, they'll answer your, your question. So I'll open it up for anyone to come forward. Wow, okay. On that note, we'll close the public hearing. And let's go to questions, comments from council. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. There are a couple of areas that I wanted to ask questions on where I saw cuts for departments. And I'm assuming, like, I'll just take one department here. Well, they all have, after the naming of the department, they all have 10, 20, and 70, which represents something. I guess it's a line item budget, the line item number. I'm not sure what that means. But under, on page 669, page 669, 669, under the Police Department, from the total budget for 2324, there's a certain dollar amount, 10, 10,151,324. And then you have the activity FYI for 2324. What is the next, the next line category under the 2324 year? It's ESTY, is that estimate year?
Yes, that is our estimated, estimated ending budget of 2324.
Okay. So from the total budget area of 2324 to, I would assume it's the requested budget for 2324, there, there has been a cut in, under Personnel Services. Are Personnel Services, the salaries for the Police Department employees?
Yes. So what you're seeing right now and what you're highlighting, it's the, it's the overall summary of Personnel Services, 10.1 million dollars in 2324, and 10.1 million, it's roughly a $40,000 decrease. And this is due to, we have adjusted to the actual experience in, in several areas. We have adjusted our workers' comp, we have adjusted benefits, we have adjusted the pension calculations to better align with what we are seeing as far as the experience that we, that we have. In the previous fiscal years, we, I believe we had a lot of our, a lot of our staffing or personnel in the Police Department being reflected on a higher cost of the pension plans when the actual experience is we are having newer staff come in, newer officers that are not part of that grandfather, very high pension plan. They're now part of the PEPRA plan, which is, which is a savings to the city. So we have adjusted those rates, and that, that is showing that decrease in that personnel line item. It's $40,000, and that's part of our adjustment to the actual experience of where people are falling as far as the cost in personnel.
So for the Building Department, number 424, would that be the same answer or a different one?
Let me see.
Because there, there are cuts for that one as well.
Oh, for the Building Department?
Yeah, there were significant, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, for Building Department, yes, it is a significant reduction. But that is because we just got awarded the, the ERF grant, the Encampment Resolution Fund grant, and in part of the housing manager and the administrative staff member that helps in the Housing Department. They, the, the grant pays for the, for administrative personnel. So we have shifted those costs. Actually, it's like 20% of their, of their cost will be covered by the grant. So you see that reduction in the Building Department. We have not, and from, from the, from the salary schedule, Exhibit B, we have not made any changes as far as requesting any new staffing or reduction in staffing. It's just staff moving around the benefiting or available funding where we can, we can get, we can move them and get reimbursement from.
Okay, thank you. And then on page 670, it says Department 427, Department 427. I'm not sure what that is.
Thank you. Yes. This department in fiscal year, well, this department has been in existence for many years. It is our facilities department, and it's, it's now been moved to an internal service fund. It's Fund 605. And in, in the cost of this department, it's now, it's, it's a cost recovery services department. They have, we budget for their personnel, all of the facility, expected facility costs, and we allocate it throughout the benefiting. and we allocate it throughout the um the the benefiting uh departments. So you will see a zero in in the the personnel that, excuse me, used to be charged in this um Department four-twenty-seven or Facilities Department. It is now, it's um standalone Facilities Internal Service Fund.
Thank you. And the next one down from that is uh Department number four-twenty-nine, Code Enforcement. Uh there's some three hundred and thirteen dollars and six uh three hundred and thirteen, six hundred and eighty-eight that's been decreased uh in Personnel Services.
Um yes, and for it, for this department, um the personnel was shifted or the some of the um some of those staffing costs was shifted to our Measure H, Measure P, and our CFD.
Okay. Under Streets, uh four-thirty-one, uh is this the budget area for the repair of our streets in the City of Los Manos?
That is.
So I do see a reduction in that as well, and it it brings me pause and concern because uh our streets are in such deplorable conditions. Um I I could take one that really comes to mind, that's L Street, right in front of DMV where just hundreds of people travel that street uh on a on a weekly basis, and it's just turned to gravel. So I'm I'm just wondering why our street budget was cut.
Um our our street budget, it is, it we're we still have the same level of services as far as personnel. Um our, and and really, the uh the capital outlay back in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four of two point four million compared to the twenty-four, twenty-five. It's um it we can only, we can only budget what is available to us. And this is this, all of this um money is from the street, it's funded through the SB one, um the SB one money, the road maintenance, um funding the um Local Transportation Fund, LTF, and Measure V. So um all of these um improvements, um right now, they're at one point eight seven million. Um we we budget based on what revenue is coming in for all of those other funds.
Okay, all right, thank you on that one. Um. And I noticed that uh Department four-fifty-one Recreation, um those budgets increased significantly. Uh the only one that did decrease was capital outlay. So um are there significant plans? Um well, the the salaries increased and the uh services and supplies in increased, so um.
Yes, um well, this is part of the um the adjusting of our um of of our personnel. Um I know that some of the um some of the salaries get paid out of Measure H, but if the there is certain percentage that gets allocated to Measure H, and if Measure H cannot fully support, we have to, we have to bring this back to the General Fund. So um so the the there is some reallocation of of bodies in um in the Recreation Fund, um in order for us to be able to stay within the the limits of what it's been um it what it's been outlined for the uh for for the for the Measure H, what we can use, and I believe it's fifteen percent for Recreation. Um also, in the Supplies and Services, um I believe that we have um we have the the tree trimming um items and um.
One of the larger items in maintenance is gonna be tree uh tree maintenance. Um that is a non-capital item, but it's a large vegetarian item.
Okay, thank you. And then um the next one is Department number four-ninety-five, Contingency.
Yeah.
We went from uh fifty fifty thousand to, I'm sorry. Uh fifty thousand to five hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yes, that's correct. Um the five hundred thousand dollars that um we are budgeting an extra five hundred thousand dollars in this uh contingency fund in order for us to mitigate any impacts in salaries and benefits once the labor negotiation agreements come to the council. Um this is our way to be able to provide a, the council, a a fiscally sound and responsible budget presentation in which we are budgeting for the worst, we're budgeting for, in the event, once we have um once we have labor agreements and we are um applying different um benefit factors and cost of living increases to all of the five um union groups that we are still pending negotiations, we are able to say, um council, we set aside some money and we're able to uh cushion all of these increases based on the funding that we set aside.
So this this is for labor negotiations period and nothing else?
Uh five hundred thousand dollars labor negotiation, seventy-five thousand dollars is a contingency for City Managers discretionary or administration discretionary uh usage.
Okay, and then the last one is Department four-ninety-eight, Transfer Outs. So it it looks like we went from three hundred and eleven thousand to zero.
Yes, um last year, we had programmed three hundred and eleven thousand dollars in order to mitigate the or or to bring up to the a a positive uh the districts in um the lighting and landscape districts that were in a negative. So we did that, and we are not um asking the council to to fund or subsidize any uh landscaping in in uh light lighting districts in this year. So that's why it's zero.
And I'm assuming that's based on the fact that the two districts that we have that are in the negative are gonna work their way out sometime in the near future.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you for answering my questions.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, uh Councilmember Lewis touched on uh the roads, and you had a concern about the money allocated for roads was a lot less this time around, was that correct? Well, yeah, you 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 said something about roads, how they were, it was less than what we did last year, I think?
That's what I was asking is that, you know, the budget showed that, for streets. And so um I think our financial director gave the answer on that.
Would would you like to see more money for roads maintenance?
I thi- I think she answered that question as to where the money comes from. So that was sufficient.
Okay, I I get confused because I thought just several months back, you were concerned about the cost that we're spending on roads. And so it is, it's kind of an up and down roller coaster here sometimes, trying to figure out uh we want more money in something or less money in something, so. I did have a question about the landscape and lighting districts. So there there seemed to be some misinformation out there, it seems to be printed in the newspaper, just one thing in particular, how a landscape and lighting district is paying money into the General Fund. And I didn't, I didn't know it worked that way. I always thought that the General Fund would subsidize landscape and lighting district if it's not uh receiving the funds that are needed, like if it's a development that's not fully built out, so it has a shortfall, but we still have the expenses of it until that development gets fully built out. And then it would reimburse the General Fund whatever cost that had to go in there to buffer it until it came up to speed.
Yeah, and and not just that, but the landscape and late uh in in lighting districts, they reimburse the General Fund the efforts that we provide their the services for landscaping. So um Fund four-fifty-two, it's our our maintenance uh department. And um and and we have expenditures of one point six million dollars. One point five million is um spent on Personnel Services, and that personnel is servicing, going out to the districts, doing the mowing, the changing of the switches and providing.
So that's everyday business on how.
Everyday business, and the landscaping, uh the districts reimburse for that effort to the General Fund. And we see it as the um the charge in to the General Fund where where it's the cost of doing or providing the service to the landscape district.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That is on there.
All right, any other questions, comments? Council?
Um uh I will, I will tell you, as I went blind reading spreadsheets uh all weekend. Um first of all, this is extremely comprehensive, um and so thank you for all the time. I know this was not put together uh in a few days by any means, so thank you for all the time that it took to put this together. One thing I was very pleased with in this budget is this budget, to me, is very goal-oriented. We're not just buying things to buy them, there's a goal behind every purchase. So the van to work to get animals to rescues and move them out of town, you know, to get our wastewater treatment plant a four-wheel-drive vehicle, which is common sense. I mean, the thing, they drive up and down levees. So I was very pleased to see that this is very goal-oriented. And also the balance between, you know, the predecessors before us set um a policy about thirty percent savings, and it's a very, you know, conservatives, it's a very, you know, wasn't wasn't a bad idea by any means. But there's also the balance of, we can't build a savings account with taxpayers' money. There has to be, they they have to see the return on what they're paying the taxes. So thank you for all the effort you guys put into this, because I see that, I clearly see that, hey, the only uh the only certainty we have in this uh present election year is uncertainty, right? And so we're we're kind of preparing for whichever way the wind blows, but you guys did a really good job making an effort that taxpayers see a return on on their investment. So not that taxes aren't investment, but. Um Councilmember Lewis, you had something else?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I have one other question, and I'm not sure eh um whether or not to direct it to our uh city attorney. It's in the resolution, um, excuse me. It's uh to be further resolved that, and it's number two. The City Manager is hereby authorized to transfer per occurrence up to two hundred thousand dollars in appropriations for the General Fund and a hundred thousand dollars in appropriations for any other fund between accounts within other funds in Exhibit A, and of course Exhibit A was attached in in our um packet. Uh and that's for unforeseen events. So um the two hundred thousand, uh two hundred thousand, it says per occurrence. Could you explain to me what that means?
So I didn't write that, and I didn't have a lot of hands into the budget, so you'll have to direct that question to those that prepared that.
Yeah, and um what we use this, this is part of our financial policy in the in the budget. It's um it's it's actually part of the um the policies in the book that it's published. And so we're we're uh formalizing the the policy that it already exists here at the city. But really, the transfers per occurrence, it may be that um in the General Fund, if if there is a um if the Police Department is is it's it's in need, it's overspent in in some area in professional services and and the Administrative Department um has savings, there can be those kinds of transfers where the um funding can can change between departments with City Manager approval. Or line items too, yes.
Okay, so the two hundred, you say that there's a city policy on this?
Um that that is part of our um budget policy that it's um that it's published in in our books, yeah.
Okay, so this this is part of the resolution, but I think I heard you say just a little bit earlier that it was part of city policy, is this city policy?
It's it's part of the policy in our in our budget policy when.
It's a budget policy that that you submitted to council? Okay, so it's not a city policy. And um the hundred thousand dollars, which I assume is also a budget policy, uh can be appropriated between accounts. So does that mean that um that money can be transferred from another department to another department, or how does that work?
So the one hundred thousand dollars of appropriations, it's between funds. So that means that transfers can occur between Water and Sewer Fund or General Fund and the Water Fund. It's at the fund level, the two hundred thousand dollars is at the account or department level.
Okay, and for either one of these transfers, does it have to come back to council for approval?
Um this is the, within the City Managers.
Discretion.
Deleg- yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Delegation, yes.
Any other questions? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, ma'am. Uh so that budget policy for the two hundred thousand, um how long's that been around?
This is, I, it's my first budget.
I'm sorry.
The first budget um that I put together, but it is.
I just don't know if it's.
Within the 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 past three.
It's been around as long as I've been here for five, for at least five years. Okay, so it's definitely not new then, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's definitely not new, it's not something that was created in the past twelve months or in even the past thirty-six months?
No.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
Um the resolution, it's it's a, it's it's a, it's a mirror image of the resolution from prior years with now containing the New Year's information.
Yeah, that was another thing the newspaper got wrong too. A lot of things seem to be wrong in there.
No, no, I'm doing.
All right. So without any further uh comments or questions, do I have a motion? Councilmember Lewis, did you click here? I have you up again, sorry. Councilmember Lambert?
Here's a still blinking from earlier.
Okay.
So Mr. Mayor. We're on Adam C, Director.
Yes. C one.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the City Council Resolution Number six-seven, A three, to be adopted as read. And thank you to the department heads for uh the job well done going over this several weeks.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Jones? All right, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Lambert? Jones? Lewis? Jonas?
Yes. All right, motion passes, thank you, and nice work, everyone. All right, move on to item ten, Advisement of Public Notices. We have one report for this, we'll go to Community Economic Development Director, Susan Elms.
Picking a microphone. Um so we have one report, it's for a mobile food vendor. Uh this is to be located at three-thirty West Pacheco Boulevard. This site actually previously had a mobile food vendor, which was Tacos La Patrona, um which no longer is located there, and we have a new um mobile food truck that is proposing to be located at that site at Taco, uh known as Taco La Reina. Um and this is the American's Best Choice um Inn. Um where this will be located, the public hearing will be held Wednesday, June twelfth, at six P M uh here in the council chambers, and it'll be the first time that our new assistant planner, Justin Ragginton, will present this item.
All right, move on to item eleven, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. Uh first, I just want to give a big congratulations to Justin Cruthers, who is Employee of the Month. Good work, Justin, appreciate all the work that you do out there. Second, uh happy birthday, Vanessa, thank you for being here, for all your hard work uh and putting this uh budget workshop together. Thank you to uh you and the staff and everybody uh putting this work in. Folks, there's just a tremendous amount of work that goes into building a budget, you know, for an entire city. It's a lot of months of of work and preparation to all the department heads. I thank you, folks, for all your hard work um to the community. There's just, it's it's a tremendous amount of planning, talking, going over things, um and and making sure that we're fiscally responsible. So um I just want to say a big thank you to them for um all that hard work. Another thing, just want to make known, I'm glad it got clarified. We had a member of the public that came up here, um and just continuing just to, you know, put out false information and false facts and saying that, you know, I have, I changed this five thousand dollar limit to two hundred thousand dollars, but we just got that clarified. So, you know, if you're gonna come out here and just mislead the public purposely, for whatever purposes or gains, I just don't think that's appropriate, because at the end of the day, the citizens are watching these things, and they. of the day, the citizens are watching these things and they want appropriate information to do that for whatever your purposes are, it's just, it's, it's unacceptable, and it's really just, I think disrespectful to the staff and their hard work, they're trying to act like they're manipulating some sort of things, and quite honestly, you should probably tell the public that when you're on the council that you purposely demanded that I put a city, uh, a street light in front of your house. You should probably make that known, instead of coming up here for, you know, whatever the purposes are to, you know, go after the team and staff, just not okay, not acceptable. Um, are we perfect? No, as I've said many times before, we're going to make mistakes, we're not going to get things right. As things have been said today, you know, there's always going to be differences of opinion, we've all are, you know, are, are different, we all have a different lens that we look through, uh, through things, and, you know, while we're up here, we're going to try our very best to make, um, the best decisions that we can to ensure that the city is moving forward and, um, progressing, and so I'm, I'm really proud of the progress that we've done. Um, we had, uh, last council meeting, I wasn't here and the mayor, uh, was not here as well. Uh, him and I, we were in Washington DC, it's an annual trip that we take, um, uh, with the, uh, folks from, uh, the county and the region, um, and with our one voice trip, and we went on over there and, um, we were able to have good conversations, and as I tell people, um, when you go to these events and you, and you go to these, uh, different meetings, it's, if you're not there advocating for your cause and taking up that time, somebody else is, right? And, and we have a country, it's what, 320-plus million people, I think it is, um, you know, that are with us, and there's many other cities all throughout the entire country that are going there and advocating for their cause, advocating for their funding, advocating for their policies, their legislation that they want, um, written there, so it's a very, uh, purposeful event, and I just, I, I thank the folks that are on there, so we had a good time talking with the folks from, um, the FAA, Department of Transportation, Department Agriculture, had a good conversation talking with Senator, uh, Padilla and, um, Senator Lofanza Butler, who was there, got to meet with our congressional representative Duarte, and really got to, uh, 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 highlight, you know, a lot of the, uh, things that we're doing here out in the valley, it was really nice, they're aware of, uh, 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 our 11.8 million dollars, uh, grant, they were well aware of that, that we got on the homeless housing, so that was really good to know that they were part of that radar, um, for them, so really exciting stuff that we had there. Um, the other thing that I, um, like to highlight and, uh, that we've got done here at the city is so, um, right now, if you haven't had a chance, Noah Jones Ballpark, which is right there, right by the fairgrounds, they're doing quite a bit of work around there, they're putting a walkway all the way around there, we came to council some weeks back, um, a couple of meetings ago, if I'm not mistaken, um, got that approved, so it's really exciting for folks to be able to walk around there, people whether, you know, maybe, uh, it's an easier walk around, you're having a walk on grass, whether you have, uh, parents and kids that need a stroller, or people that may be potentially handicapped, or people that just maybe just want a smoother walking surface and walking on grass, that's getting done right now, so we're really excited about that. Um, also, uh, we've cut some trees on Ward Road, so like Ward and Pacheco, so if you're driving north on Ward Road on the right-hand side, which is the east side, we cut all those trees there, and if you keep driving to Ward and San Luis, um, and you take that street, San Luis, all the way and it curves around, um, to Pacheco Boulevard, we cut all those trees over there, it looks absolutely wonderful, and so I just want to say thank you to the good work of the team that's, um, uh, working on that, um, and we got more tree trimming that's, you know, taking place throughout the city, once again, you know, uh, for folks to understand the importance of tree trimming, one, it helps beautify the city, and we want to, you know, uh, have more people coming to the city to show that, hey, we care about our city, our tax dollars are put to good use, but also, I like to reiterate to folks of that, when we have high winds, I think what, last week, I believe it was, we had some really windy days, it was like hot and dry, and next you know, we wake up, we're like, oh my word, it's really windy, that takes up a tremendous amount of time of city staff when you have downed trees, you know, you have a police officer who has to stay there for safety purposes, sometimes for hours on end, or the, uh, uh, police department has to stay there, um, uh, for hours on end, or fire department stays there hours on end, public works to wait for PG&E to come, so those things are, uh, uh, really important that we do that, so really, if you do the math on it, it's actually tremendous cost savings in the long run, uh, uh, for us to be able to do, and it's also healthy for the trees as well, um, that we get those things done, so we're happy about that. Um, also, um, uh, one, uh, project I'm really excited about is, um, City Park, so it's on Ninth Street, um, and like East Street, um, there's a park right over there, um, kind of near Miano, um, location over there, there's a lot of folks that like to play volleyball over there, and we really went over there, we, uh, added some new, uh, DG over there, put some new, um, uh, picnic benches there, and it's just, it's a really, you know, exciting project, because it was a part, project that was just kind of a, you know, little pocket, uh, park, as Joe likes to, uh, describe it as, and so we were able to put a lot of, uh, work in there, and if you go out there, there's folks, I mean, they're pretty intense with their volleyball, I was out there, uh, I think it was last night, and they were out there till like nine o'clock at night playing volleyball, and there's a group, I mean, probably like fifteen, twenty-plus people out there playing, so that stuff always just brings a joy to your heart, uh, to be able to know that you can, you know, improve a park for folks that are enjoying it, and also for kids that go out there and play, or families, or whoever, someone that just wants to go out there for a little walk, so, um, uh, really excited about that work that's happening there. Um, uh, folks on the P-Bid, uh, really just want to say thank you for all the hard work those folks are doing, I know we highlighted some things that, um, the different businesses are doing, but just really collectively, all the hard, uh, the things that were mentioned in the, um, report by, uh, Stacy Souza at the P-Bid does, but also just the business owners, like, I really just want to say thank you to them for their investment, you know, into our city. At the end of the day, these folks only have as much money as, as they have available that they bring in, some of these folks, they work very hard and they man it themselves, and sometimes it's a one-person, two-person shop, and so whatever they can do to put in their building, you know, um, it's, it's a lot, it's a stretch, and so sometimes it's easy for us to say, my goodness, why aren't they doing this, why aren't they doing that? But, you know, everybody has a, a, a budget in their life and business, um, to be able to do things, so, um, the folks at the Jams 209, he said he's put, I, last I talked to him, oh my goodness, I think it was some time back, maybe about, uh, six-plus months ago, I'd asked him where he was at, and I think it was around like, you know, two and a half million dollars, and then today he said he's at four million dollars, I'm like, oh my word, it's a lot of money that he's putting into this building, so, you know, thank you for him on that, also the folks that were here from Blue Agave, um, you know, sometimes, you know, many, oftentimes, I should say, I leave my office eight, nine o'clock at night, um, uh, here working, and they're still in there working, doing a lot of manual labor themselves, and I think the community's going to be really happy and proud of the hard work that they're putting in there, in their building, but not just them, you know, the folks right next to me on I Street, uh, Terrick, who owns the smoke shop, he painted his building, he not only painted the front of his building, he also painted, um, the back of his building, did some facade work, right next to him, there's another little, uh, business there that they did some painting on their work, um, uh, Tony's run, uh, by Elaine Corey's building, her whole building got painted, um, I know uh, some years back with the P-Bid, Tom Cowgen painted a lot of his buildings, correct me if I'm wrong there, Stacy did a lot of work there, um, there was a gentleman, uh, right next to Wool Growers, he went and painted his building, did some work there. On I Street, the folks at, uh, the old, uh, Stockham's Bar, please forgive me, I forget the name of that place, I just, I, I'm old Los Manos, I remember Stockham's Bar, Old Shiner's Place, they put a lot of, uh, uh, work into their building, um, I know Jesse's Bar's recently changed hands, they're putting, you know, uh, work into, uh, their building to try to get some, uh, work going down there, up along, you know, um, Sixth Street, the Odd Fellows folks did work at their building, I know Taylor Wolfson has a, a, a house, uh, that, you know, piece of property that's near Santa Fe Market, he put money into the, do the roof of that building it has, if any of you folks have ever had to replace a roof just on your house alone, that's not cheap, um, so, you know, these folks are, you know, putting investments into that, and so we thank them for that, you know, it's, you know, uh, they're, they're working really hard and diligent, so I just want to really highlight all those folks who just, you know, the, the work that they're doing to help make that a better place, so it's, it's, it's really good. The other thing is, you know, we, we want to talk about our parks and the things that we've done, you know, uh, Joe, I'm gonna try this here off the top of my head, and this is totally off the cuff, I did not prepare this, but, um, I, I want to talk about all the work and the things and improvements that we've done at the park, so when we talk about Pacheco Park, Joe Heim, uh, I think you can remember about two, about a year, two years ago, I went to you on Pacheco Park, and Pacheco Park was just in really rough shape, uh, and as soon as I came in, I have a photo actually here on my phone, I think it was in October, uh, and I, I got some photos here of how rough Pacheco Park really looked, and I remember I first came into you and I said, Joe, we gotta get this thing looking sharp, and we went over there right away, we did all-new irrigation in that park, the sign, if you folks have a memory, uh, that to remember this, it was an old wooden sign, and it said Merced County Park, um, and it wasn't even a county park, it was a Los Manos Park, and I remember I went to Joe Heim, I said, Joe, this is a Los Manos Park, what is this? Well, where's that? So I said, no, we need to get a new sign, so if you go there now, we have a nice green new sign there, this happened some time back, uh, then we also got some all-new landscape that was right underneath there, there's some little flowers and, uh, uh, flowers, uh, for lack of better words, that were there, and I said, we got it all redone, then on top of that, it had all wooden shakes on that little sign, it said, no, we, we gotta get this little, you know, uh, little roof on, on top of it done, so they went all that, I, that was done, I think, in the November time, I have photos on my phone, really proud of that, spent a significant amount of money to get that done, um, it was just, it was dirt, it actually wasn't even grass, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, is that correct?
Yeah, it was large dirt sections.
Yeah, large dirt sections all over the place, and the irrigation was not working properly, is that correct?
Uh, there was, uh, inadequate coverage-
Yeah.
-throughout the park.
Exactly, so if you now go over there, we've put all that in, actually, right now, since we've been speaking, he's been working on that project, we've got a new, uh, booster pump over there that we're working on right now, so if you're on Seventh Street, um, you see a big hole over there, and they've been doing a lot of work on that, can you explain to me exactly what that is?
Uh, yeah, so the Pacheco Park irrigation project, we are, um, first and foremost connecting water, um, instead of a well access for the water, we are now connecting off of Seventh Street, and then we put in a large booster pump, um, as part of the project, and that project is, is ongoing, but that will, um, service the whole park, um, with water from Seventh Street, uh, and, um, just upgrade the irrigation in order to be, uh, expandable for the future in terms of improvements that we may make.
Yep, exactly, so we're doing future planning there, right? And also another thing on that pump, uh, who are we getting water from? Who did we have to ask for permission before to get water, to water our own piece of property? To be very clear.
Yes, the school, uh, the well was on the school side property, um, so we were dependent on, on the school, and we would have to, um, uh, depend on different, uh, watering schedules to be, um, opposite of the football stadium.
Exactly, so if the school district just decided one day, say, hey, you can't get water, we're shutting it off, we're kind of out of luck?
Yes, it was a, uh, I guess you could say an urgent or emergency type of issue, um, the school district, of course, as part of their stadium renovation, um, made that decision, and we had to come in after the fact.
Yeah, and we had a little worry session there for a while, because, you know, they were, they needed, they were fixing Lofton Stadium, which is great work by the school district for that, and real excited about that, but all of a sudden, we're like, oh my word, we can't even water our own grass because we're reliant on the school district, is that correct, Joe Heim?
Yeah, we were, um, in danger of losing access.
Yeah, exactly, so what did we do, folks? We went and took control of our own destiny, and we went and got that redone, so, uh, really excited about that. Also, something I remember, I came back and reported on, council members, is when I first got here, uh, when you're at Pacheco Park, that building right in the middle of Pacheco Park, that building, believe it or not, belonged to the county. That building was not even ours, the center building in Pacheco Park was not even our building, and I said, really? Uh, it's not our building? No, so I went to the county, but we have been taking care of it, we have been maintaining it, we've been hosting classes, basically it was county by name, but ours by game, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so now, um, I, I, I gave a shout-out some time back, a big thank you to Supervisor Silveira, um, who was our county supervisor, um, collaborated and worked with him, collaborated and working with, um, Raul Mendez, who's the county CEO, and we got that building signed on over to us, so folks, proud to say, we did this about a year ago, that building is now ours, uh, so that was, you know, good work of something that we got done that we did there. Um, the other thing was, is if I think about our parks, folks, and I'm just literally trying to do this off the top of my head, I had no plans for this, but I like to highlight all the work we've done in our parks. Um, if I think about, uh, Vineyard B, uh, Park, uh, I think we added some, a new shade cell over there some time back, Joe, within probably the last year and a half, is that correct?
Yeah, just a couple of years ago.
Okay, yeah, probably just leave your mic on, because I ain't gonna be going back and forth to you for a while. Um, and then also, you go look at Vineyard B, we did that, then I also remember about a year and a half, two years ago, Joe Heim, we went and drove the Ranchwood Park, okay? And you go and drive Ranchwood Park, one of the original first parks that we had here in Los Manos, and I went over there with Joe Heim, and there was a significant amount on the corner of, uh, uh, of the parking lot, there's all these oleanders that were just all right there in the very front, it was all dirt, all around the basketball court, there was no landscape, it was all dirt, is that correct, Joe Heim?
Yes, as part of the original development, only a back concrete basketball court was put in, the, um, surrounding area was left as dirt with no irrigation, uh, and the landscape in the parking lot was, um, I guess you would say aged.
Exactly, and that was, you know, been like that for original park, I remember-
Approximately thirty years.
Yeah, approximately thirty years it was like that, folks, I remember playing there, it was the original park, uh, actually, Chief Foose, that was your park, you lived right over there, uh, not too far from it, so I'm sure you went over there for walks of things, I remember you living over there a long time, so was there for a long time, played a lot of, uh, just sports there, you know, uh, games there, and so if you go over there and look at that now, go look at what we've done, all-new fresh landscape there, new mulch, we got some rocks there, we added all-new turf and grass all around that park, right? And then we also went and did a really cool project, you know, I hate to say it, uh, but it might be one of my favorite, uh, painting of the basketball courts, I like them all, I must admit, uh, but this one's really cool, it's kind of like Captain America theme, and we did a paint project of that park, and it's just all, you know, red, white, and blue, um, that was a big improvement we did to that park, which is really exciting, so, um, that was good work there. Then if we want to go on over to, um, uh, the Skylark side of things, Regency, um, if you go, there's a little basketball court over there, it's really cool, if you want to play by yourself, it's great, but if you have a friend that wants to play with you, it gets a little tight, so you might just tell them, hey, this is a one-man court, uh, but you go there, we did a little, uh, space painting, right? Space theme, so all along, we got all these little astronauts, space painting there, it's a really cool basketball court, um, I actually remember that park as a kid going there, because that, if, if, folks that do not know, is that one time that whole area was just all filled, and there was a fence that ran across there, and, uh, it was just all dirt back there, but you have to be a, an old-timer to remember that area, and so now it's just a big old park that's all, um, uh, meshed together, and we have some, uh, uh, soccer fields that use, use there quite a bit, that was a big improvement, um, that we did there at the soccer fields, and then also we plan on doing some picnic benches over there, I believe coming up sometime soon, right?
Yes, park staff will be installing new picnic tables.
Yep, new picnic benches, so then if you go on a little bit south of that, and you go on over to the Regency Park, and, 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 and right there, um, I remember we planted, uh, there's a bunch of trees that were planted probably in the last, like, year and a half or so, big old row of trees that were going on, on there, I believe we got some playground improvements that are going on there, there were some lights that were out there recently, we went and added some new lights there, uh, because they were out, I remember we talked about that, so that was some progress we did there. Then if you go on a little bit, well, further south, you go on over to the Veronas, which is over there by Pacheco Park, I mean, some probably about, I don't know, once again, within the last year and a half, we added this shade cell over there, if I'm not mistaken, we also did, uh, an Arbor Day event there, if I'm not mistaken, right? We went and planted a bunch of trees over there at the Verona, uh, park, so that was something that was really exciting that we got done there. Then if you go on over to the next park, you go on a little bit further south, and you go on over to College Greens, if you haven't been to the College Greens Park, that one is really cool, it's our first all-inclusive playground that we have over there, to where, you know, folks that may have, you know, maybe just challenges, walking, or potential handicap deals, they can roll up, um, on there, it's a brand-new playground, looks really cool, really nice, and if you go all around, there's like a bunch of painting all around there, we can do like little hopscotch, crab crawls, frog things, really cool, um, thing for you to be able to take a look at that, so that's good. Then I'm gonna go all the way back up north again to Vineyard B Park, uh, no, uh, Joe, it's the one to the, uh, west of Ranchwood Park, has the fish, new playground, which one's that one?
Uh, Vineyard A.
Vineyard A, there we go, so Vineyard A, we got a new playground there at Vineyard A, and we did that, and it's a fish-themed little playground, looks pretty cool, so if you got kids that like fish, you can take them to that one. Um, then the other one that I'm forgetting, Joe, just came to my mind, I told you I was gonna hop back and forth here, is we did the Pirate Thing Park, and I forget the name of that park.
Davis Park.
Davis Park, there we go, so Davis Park, it's by Miano and Circle K, it's in between, in the middle.
Santa Ana.
Exactly, uh, so I, I always struggle with that, I know where it's at in my head, but we did, uh, a pirate ship over there, and I know I've gotten a lot of compliments from, uh, folks in the community, where the kids actually love to go to that one, to go to the pirate park that we got over there, which is really good. Um, then, you know, we got Catholic Park that we just did, the Catholic Park is the one right behind Santa Fe, got a new playground there, and fortunately, one of them got burned down, but we did get a new playground that went there. Um, then if you go on over to Little Page, the one, uh, right off of Sixth Street, is that correct?
Yes.
We have a little, uh, a new playground that just got installed over there, um, and that, uh, was, is a new one, I forget.
Barn theme.
Barn theme, there we go. Thank you, yep, a little barn theme, uh, playground that we've got going on over there, so that one's, uh, really good. Um, then if you go on over to Citrus, which is over there on Second Street, and I'm trying to do this off the top of my head, Patricia. Um, Citrus over there, we went and painted that basketball court, and it's like green, yellow, and orange, I believe Carlos, and we put, you know, new, uh, bark and chips over there, probably some time back, over there in that playground. So, uh, really excited for folks to see, you know, what have we been doing with parks, this is a really good one there, um, so happy about that. Um, then we go on over to the Gardens, um, and I'm just bouncing around here, just for sake of time, on I Street. Um, we went and did a painting of that basketball court there, and then we got a new playground over there, um, I remember. Um, it's a really tall, tall slide, too, so if you like tall slides, you can go on over there and use that for kids that like heights. Um, so that's, that's a park there, then, um, right now we're working on Gardens.
Three.
Three, exactly, and we, uh, working on getting the new slide in there, here pretty soon, so that's a neat little playground that we've got going on there. So, these are just some of them, all off the top of my head, of improvements that we've done with our parks in a very short period of time, which is really exciting. And then another thing which is really good is if, I just drove it, uh, just the other night, I think it was Tuesday night, and right there on Seventh and Pacheco, we call it the cages, it's right by the overpass. In a partnership, a great partnership we have with the school district, just the other night, there was about twenty-plus kids that were playing basketball over there, enjoying that playground and that basketball court there, that was a big, you know, improvement and collaboration with the school district, and I want to thank those folks for that. So, you know, we're really, you know, been focusing a lot on our parks and just really, you know, all across the city to try to beautify things and make things better, and so those are just some of the, um, few things that we've done. And if you take a look, um, on the agenda packet on page two fifteen, you can go ahead and read through on a lot of the improvements of things that we plan on doing in our parks in this next fiscal year. And so I know it's a long night, it's nine forty-two, and, and I'm seeing Yon's out there, so to try to, you know, speed this up, is, there's just a lot of more work and progress of, of these parks we're gonna do. We got Ranchwood Park parking lot repair, Vineyard B parking lot repair, um, we got St. Francis landscape improvements, Regency Lot D playground improvements. So, a lot of work and a lot of progress that we've got going on there with the park. So, I just want to say thank you to the team, uh, for the hard work on the park side of things, thank you to staff, uh, for all the hard work that we do in collaborating and making sure these places are safe, and they're well-lit and well-maintained, and all responses to that. So, uh, thank you, Mayor, that's my report.
All right, I was about to start the timer on you. Uh, let's go to item twelve, report update, Merced County Association of Governments, MCG, Peninsula Clean Energy, Measure V Committee, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and the P bid. And we'll start with Councilmember Lewis, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution.
Thank you. Um, we had our budget hearings, uh, for the public last month, and, um, overseeing over five hundred million dollars of, uh, funds to be distributed to farmers and to the public who are in need. Um, the air board has basically been created, uh, by the state of California, and there are several air boards throughout the state of California for health reasons, uh, to reduce, um, people who have asthma, to create a, a better environment, uh, for people to breathe air. And of course, we live in the basin here, so, um, our district, uh, has done exceptionally well to reduce the pollution here in the San Joaquin Valley. So we will have our final budget approval, uh, for the meeting coming up, uh, this month in June, and, uh, that's my report for the air board.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jones for the P bid? All right. Um, MCG, um, wasn't here at the last meeting because I attended the One Voice Conference in Washington DC that we talked about. Uh, that was along with MCG. It's good preparation for me, um, I'm currently the Vice Chair of MCG in July. I'll take over as the Chair, uh, of MCG. And so to, this be my second trip and, and have those meetings, and again, just be the voice of Los Manos to get there. And again, when, when people say Central California, they either, you know, the federal government thinks San Francisco or Los Angeles, and don't realize where we are, so it was good to have those relationships, uh, to try to build those relationships and, and get a voice for Los Manos. Um, on the, we have an upcoming, uh, MCG meeting. For Peninsula Clean Energy, for those that don't know, um, I was really fortunate. My peers decided to select me on the Finance Committee, uh, for PCE. Uh, last year there was a surplus of funds, and there were some decisions that we made. Um, one of the decisions, uh, that, that I helped bring forth was to get, uh, low-income cares and Farrah customers in the city of Los Manos, more than five thousand two hundred of them, um, to receive a rebate, uh, right before Christmas on their bill. Um, and so I'm, I'm really thankful for PCE selecting me to, to be part of the Finance Committee going forward, uh, to help, help with those types of things. Um, and then also, uh, recently, um, I found out that I will be replacing, uh, Mayor Serrato in Merced as the alternate on Lafco. Uh, and so doing that, so I've been appointed to that, so I'm looking forward to, to that opportunity as well, so. Uh, that's all I have on those. We'll go to item thirteen, City Council Member Reports. Start with Councilmember Jones.
Yes, Mayor. I want to thank staff for all their hard work on, uh, the budget and, um, these budget hearing nights. They always go for quite some time. Um, but yeah, thank you for all your hard work. You know, it's obvious, uh, this November, Greg Hostetler plans on, uh, if he has his way to replace all of council up here. Doug Begonia, as well as myself, we're not up for reelection this year, so hence, for the reason for the recall. It's hard to take it personally, because if there was any other people sitting in District Two and District Three seats, he'd be recalling them and finding whatever political propaganda that he can use to, uh, use against us. And with his help of his good buddy Gene Lee, with the, with that newspaper that always seems to be printing a, uh, very biased narrative on everything. Um, you know, Greg recently pulled back an annexation agreement, um, my guess is, he knows it may not pass with his current council. Um, maybe that could be a reason why he wants to change council, is because he wants to get that to go through. Uh, in my opinion, if you actually built nice developments where the roads connect, where the parks are actually built, uh, where the common areas are nice, and they're fully landscaped, uh, maybe we'd actually have a better relationship with that developer, uh, much like the developer that we have on the southwest side of town, which is Anderson Homes. Uh, they, they build nice homes, uh, they build nice parks, if you guys have been over there. Um, their neighborhoods are just nice. Uh, they even know how to connect all their roads together, which is something very vital. I, I wish Greg knew how to do that, or I wish he would just do it and not dump it on the city when he finds a loophole in agreement or whatever it may be. Um, you know, there, Deanza Road, how that doesn't connect, it's not the first time Greg's done that. We also have Vineyard Road. Greg comes in here, and he complains to the city, why is that not open? The people need it, for emergency. Well, if Greg actually cared about the people, anybody else other than himself, he would have demanded that road to go through before he buil- built his first home. He would have demanded it to go through before he sold his first home. At the very least, I would think he would demand it to be opened before he finished the subdivision and walked away twenty-four years, or twenty-four years, uh, later. So, there's a lot of smoke show going on with him. You know, um, when you're comparing developers, apples to apples, Anderson Home, they give the city staff no heartburn whatsoever. They, they don't have all these special requests where it seems like they're trying to cheat the developments, cheat the taxpayer, cheat the residents, cheat the city. Um, they partner with the city in a great way to which we would hope that they would build more, because we need better neighborhoods. I, I don't understand why Greg is the only one that's difficult. I know we have staff that will reach out to him, talk to him, trying to get a deal together. Shaughnessy Park, staff has reached out to him. He has not dedicated that park over to the city. We've even had designs, we've even selected a contractor, bid the full nine yards, ready to go out there, and he kicks off ours, uh, higher contractor. Why? My guess is he wants to dangle that like a carrot for other development agreements in the city. He's not gonna release that park until he gets something else he wants, and we're just not playing that game anymore. So, that's why he's coming up and attacking us. You know, what we've been experiencing with Greg's behavior is really nothing short of a toddler with a checkbook. That is all. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Go to Councilmember Lewis.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of questions. Um, well, one statement is, um, I was, um, walking my dogs down Or- Ortega Lita, going north, uh, between Cardoza and, uh, Birch. And I think that, uh, northeast side of the road was landscaped probably about a year, year and a half ago. But the type of plants that are being used in some of our public landscape are too high maintenance and require a lot of attention. There's some succulents that are planted there, the succulents are growing out into the public sidewalk, and all of the flowering on the succulents are into the sidewalk. So, every, you only have half of the sidewalk that, uh, is usable. So, um, you know, I just want to put a request out there to, I don't, I don't know what the schedule is for that maintenance, but it's way past due, and, um, I, I would hope that, um, going forward in the future, that our department has more control over the type of landscape that we put in, that's more controllable for the public areas and things. You know, the flowers are beautiful and all of that, but they just, they require a lot of maintenance. Um, our city had a financial audit done, which was supposed to have ended, uh, finished up at the latter part of last year. Um, haven't heard anything about that audit, and, um, I would hope to, uh, get some answers from our staff as to where the audit is and when we're expected to hear, uh, from the company who, um, did the audit for the city of Los Manos. And the other request that I'd made a few meetings back is, we had, uh, that organization that we hired to do the TOT audit as to whether or not, uh, the motels in our town were paying the proper tax, and I think some other things that they were supposed to audit. But we never had a, a report back to council as to the results of that audit. So, I, I would hope that, um, we can give, um, that information, uh, disseminated to the council if the, if the report has been done. And that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Move on to Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I also want to, uh, thank the department heads, uh, for the last month or two, two, well, since probably first part of the year to getting the budget put together. I know it's a strenuous and ongoing process, and trying to work things out for everybody to, to be happy. Uh, another, another thing, uh, I'm not sure if you guys remember the last meeting on the fifteenth. I had mentioned that, you know, uh, myself and Chief Reyna were invited to, uh, San Francisco to an award ceremony, and, and it's, it's one of those awards for these big, uh, building management companies, like ours that built the police station, uh, Vanir. Uh, but we got, we were honored, actually, to go up there, to be with Vanir, to accept one of the highest awards for these building companies that built our police station. And hopefully there, there'll be pictures to come. But the award was, uh, there was fi- we were sitting there, and there was five different, I believe it was five, if I'm correct, uh, four or five, that they chose from. And they chose, uh, and, you know, chose our, our police station, our Vanir, uh, to get the award. Uh, and, and it's called, uh, it's the CMAA, uh, Building Award. And what it is, is up to forty-nine million dollars for, per project. Uh, not only did we hit that mark of forty-nine million dollars, probably a little bit under it, we also come in under budget and on time for, for the building. So, it, it was a great honor just to go up there. It's at a nice gala, I had to actually put a different suit on, actually, for this, this program. It was a little different, but, but it, it was a nice honor. I was actually the first one up on the stage, and the lady that presented, this is, uh, of course, for California, but, uh, the people from all over, uh, you know, come to this thing, it was quite a few people. But the first thing I remember, the lady said, be careful, it's slippery. Uh, so I was the first one, and this trophy that they handed to us was just like a trophy you'd see on a CMA Awards, uh, country, or big awards. It's super nice. It even states on the bottom, Los Manos Police Station, you know, on this award. Of course, we don't get to hold it down here, it's, it's in that Vanir. But we were actually, they were actually really nice to contact, uh, you know, get us to come up and accept the award with it. But I think Chief, uh, he guided me away, a few ways up there around that San Francisco traffic, but we made it. But, uh, thanks to the Vanir, uh, management team, they were, they were awesome. So, also, um, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, uh, uh, again, for this budget, this is probably the lightest budget that I've been here on. It wasn't, the last couple of years we've had some pretty good, uh, this was kind of a, a, a budget that was more, uh, just like it was, uh, said earlier, balanced to where it needed to go. It wasn't heavy, it, it, it went to the way, uh, this city needs to move forward and, uh, and for future years. And appreciate all the hard work that you guys did, and, uh, other than that, I hope, uh, yeah, I'd like to see some good comments in our paper, but, uh, I don't think it's gonna happen. So, I, I have nothing else on here.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
Yeah, so, uh, fantastic job to the staff on the budget. Um, that's incredible work that you guys do. Not even gonna try to talk about all the numbers I see, but, uh, amazing things, uh, from the city, uh, amazing things from the city manager, uh, to report on for us. Uh, so, I, I, I too want to talk about the recall and, uh, against myself and, and Councilmember Jones, and, uh, you know, I had a former council member come up here and talk about, why the eagerness to sign the recall? Well, you know, I, I, I've been out, uh, over the past two weeks, and I had two people try to get me to sign my own recall. Um, after they, uh, told me how much I lied about myself. And I would say, wow, if that wasn't me, I think this was a terrible person. But, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm not perfect by any means, uh, not a perfect person or a perfect council member, but I am none of those things. So, yeah, uh, that was the tactic they were using, and I can't even fault the people out there collecting signatures that are trying to make a living. I'm sure they were instructed by Mr. Hotlist, Hostetler, to get, uh, signatures by any means. I mean, right? That's politics. It's dirty. Um, so, you know, between the, all of those falsehoods being spread, uh, by all the minions holding clipboards, and we have trolls on the internet that like to lie about people, and our newspaper, not a peep of that. Definitely not getting what the count, what the, what the city manager said as a free sample of the West Side Express to your, to your mailbox. Um, you know, between all of that, um, I understand why people are signing the recall. I mean, jeez. Um, I sound like a terrible person. Um, but I came here to initiate change for a community that requested it, and I knocked on all their doors. Um, they were tired of minimal growth under previous councils and city managers. Um, and I'm not gonna apologize for holding developers accountable. Um, one of my goals is to ensure that developers complete their projects in a manner that beneficial to our citizens. Uh, to those upset about Deanza Way, the entryway, and Shaughnessy Village Park not being completed, I share your frustration. Um, these projects should have been completed before my tenure here started. Uh, but the developer is stalling in his hope that he gets a weak council and a weak city manager so he can continue to push through subpar developments. Always has, always will. Um, if his political maneuvering with your parks and roadways resulted in my recall, then so be it. Uh, he may get his way in the end, but it won't be because I sell the city out. Um, never, not now, not ever. And, uh, I keep hearing him, uh, talk about, leave it up to the voters. I thought we did two years ago. But, uh, like Councilmembers Lewis, uh, reported in, uh, what, the West Side Express two weeks ago, she'd like to see us all up for reelection. Um, because people aren't getting their way. So, um, I'll sum up the recall. I heard another one, why the recall? Um, they want to use you, the voters of Los Manos, to recall myself and Councilmember Jones, because we have the best, your best interests as a community at heart and not theirs. It's that simple. I'm done.
All right. And I guess I'll go last, uh, and everybody's staring at the clock, it is ten o'clock. So, uh, I, I want to start with the public comments first, um, and again, I share, absolutely have, share the frustration of the woman who comes forward every, I feel like she's here every council meeting, she should be, um, to talk about the homeless, the issue with the homeless. One thing, just again, our job here is policies, procedures, and ordinances, we do not control human beings. We just don't. I think we saw that again in another section of our meeting. Um, we can offer resources, we can guide people, we can, again, get people the help they need if they want the help, but we do not control human beings. And, and I get, she, it's, she's frustrated, I'm frustrated with her. I wish she was facing the governor, not me, um, because I, I think she might have a lot more traction. So, and again, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever it is we can legally, um, and ethically to, to resolve this issue. So, again, my, my heart goes out to her. Um, uh, again, another former council member coming up here and asking me to, uh, address a traffic construction project that's being ran by Caltrans that's not in our city limits. Again, I have authority over the city limits of the city of Los Manos. One thing I will say about the, the Volta one fifty-two, the roundabout, I get it, people hate roundabouts, there's something different. What I will tell you, they do save lives, period. Um, we've had tomato trucks year after year. I responded once to a horrible CHP accident in that intersection with two CHP officers, and again, traffic lights would not have prevented that, period. Um, so again, I know people aren't fans of roundabouts and not a fan of change, I totally understand that. Uh, but also understand that, uh, I don't have jurisdiction, uh, uh, over that, uh, or influence of anything that Caltrans does outside of the city limits. Uh, we heard another person come forward, and again, um, giving her opinion, uh, about, about Greg Hostetler and the things like that. I find it interesting, she's also a writer for the West Side of Express, which also receives funds from Greg Hostetler and, and paid advertisements, and every time a free newspaper shows up in our mailbox, somebody's paying for it, so I, I wonder who that is. Um, we also heard firsthand tonight from, uh, from our developer Greg Hostetler, and again, I'm gonna preface this, this isn't personal. This is business, this is what we have to do. I have absolutely zero ill will toward Greg. Considered him a friend, still considered him a friend, I think he's a great businessman, but I will tell you, this is business, and I'm not looking out for Greg Hostetler's best interests, I'm looking out for the interest of the forty-plus thousand people that are here, and that's, that has to be my priority. Um, but we heard ha- firsthand out of his own mouth tonight, this is not have to, the recall does not have to do with these two gentlemen on the far left. It has to do with our city manager, and that's what it has to come down to. Um, my expectations of our city manager is to treat everyone the same. I don't care if you're building one fence or if you're building five thousand houses, everybody should be treated the same with dignity and respect. Uh, and, and in my opinion, that's what he's done. Now, does that hurt some people that have special interests? Does that hurt people that are maybe used to getting their way and getting things done in a different type of fashion? Maybe, but I don't care about that. I care that everybody's treated the same, and that we, we do business with everyone equally. Uh, and I feel like that's being done. Um, what I don't appreciate is some of the things that are going on kind of behind the scenes. The last, uh, correspondence I had with the Greg Hostetler, we talked on the phone, uh, had a conversation, and he said, hey, I'm gonna text you a list, list of dates that we can sit down and meet. That was about a month ago, I've gotten nothing since. Um, but yet he did ask for our Public Works Director to come after hours and meet him by himself, which I don't think is professional whatsoever. Um, so, also on to that, um, this issue with the recall, and I see the paid advertisements, right, of why the recall and the settlement to, to our city manager and things like that. Uh, if that's the case, why didn't this recall happen sixteen months ago? Why is it happening now? Uh, is it because in our relationships, people aren't getting what they want in their way? I don't know, but I, I just find that interesting. And then also to your point on the recall, uh, my daughter was approached, uh, by a person with a clipboard and said, hey, if you want to see if you're a registered voter, sign here. Uh, and she grabbed it and read the top of it and said, no, this actually says, recall Doug Begonia, not what you're telling me. Um, and so again, we, you know, our democratic process, if somebody wants to conduct a recall, if a citizen's, you know, wanted to do, you pay, someone's not doing their job by all means, that is the process. Do your process. Where I have an issue with is when we're straight out lying to our community of what we're doing, okay? Um, and again, the, the process is a process, I, I wholeheartedly believe in it, um, it's your right to do so, you know, however, um, that's not what's happening here. People, people are being lied to, and that, that I don't appreciate. Um, moving on from the public comments, um, Memorial Day, I was able to attend Memorial Day event, uh, out at the cemetery with the VFW and American Legion, that was an amazing event, so thank you for inviting me to speak to that. Um, last night I got to do something really cool. Thank you to Memorial Hospital staff for reaching out to me. Dr. Robert Lawson, who has served the city as a trauma medic and emergency room physician for the last ten years, last night was his last shift. Uh, and so somebody called me and gave me a, uh, kind of tipped me off that last night was his last shift. So I was able to coordinate with our city manager and Chief Reyna, uh, and we brought, uh, quite a few of the police officers there. So I was able to coordinate with our city manager and Chief Reyna, uh, and we brought uh quite a few of the police officers there uh to wish him well and to thank him for his service. Um, especially because in two thousand seventeen Officer Aaron Pinion was shot in the line of duty and Dr. Lawson saved his life. And so that was really cool to, to do that last night. Um, also want to say congratulations to our high school graduates coming up, um, I know, I live with one. Um, but thank you, uh, I know some of them are in Disneyland right now, but again, congratulations uh to the class of twenty twenty-four, which sounds really weird to say out loud. Uh, but uh, you know, and best wishes on, on all your future endeavors. Uh, and then congratulations to Little League, uh, which just closed out, so these kids, uh, they had a great season and went out there. Uh, and on that note, our PAL program desperately needs coaches, so we really need some coaches, so if anybody's willing to volunteer and step up, uh, that would be appreciated. And then last but not least, June fifteenth, we will be hosting a soccer event and movie night at Noah Jones Park, followed by a drone show, which will be pretty cool. Um, so those things, if you don't know, it's kind of like a fireworks show, however, they're animal friendly, um, really cool to see, uh, and that'll be, that'll be a good time. And so that's on the fifteenth at four oh one Seventh Street, uh, and starts, it's an all-day event actually, uh, but it's gonna go until about ten PM, so. Uh, with that being said, uh, I have a motion to adjourn, Councilmember Jones? Uh, have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned, ten oh six, thank you, everyone.